Ladies and gentlemen, we began this meeting about an hour ago, an hour and ten minutes ago, and have been in closed session for the last hour to review two items as listed on the agenda. In both cases, they are, it was status reports that were being given to us regarding either litigation or potential litigation in the city and labor negotiations projected for the city. There's no action taken by council, so there's nothing to report at this time. We will start the open session with invocation. We already had the roll call an hour ago when we started our closed session. So if we can at this time, we'll ask Dwayne Armstrong come forward and stand for the invocation.
You'll follow me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number 11 on the agenda has been pulled tonight. This was the taxi cab, additional taxi cab permit for Lompoc. We may see it again in the future, but it was pulled for tonight. Also, there's an item that's kind of split tonight. There was a request by Mr. Lingle, Councilmember Lingle, to review the prayer issue, but it's also part of the policies that we will be taking up later in the meeting. So that item will not come up under the council requests. It will come up instead in item number six, which is our policy questions. The first item on the agenda tonight is a presentation to the winners of the Lompoc Valley Middle School Spelling Bee. Councilman Lingle and I were both invited to judge the spelling bee at the middle school a week or so ago, and the two people, the two young persons that were served first and second place in that contest did quite well, very poised. They'll go on now and they'll represent the county, represent Lompoc Valley Middle School in a countywide competition, and I'll ask both of them to come up. If you're here, please come up to the podium. Ladies and gentlemen, I want to present to you, if you don't mind turning around, and there's a TV camera there, and there, and there, I don't know which one might be on you right now.[213.20][213.20](Laughter) All of them, probably. First place winner was Bria Carrucci, and the runner-up was Frank Williams. And if they feel like it, I would hope that they would wear a City of Lompoc pin when they go into the countywide competition. I want to commend you very much, Bria, congratulations, Frank, and congratulations, and thank you, and good luck to you as you move on up the line. Councilman Lingle, do you have anything to add?
I just want to say that there were thirteen participants in the spelling bee. Every one of them were really classy young people. They all could have represented the City of Lompoc very well. These two just happened to a little bit better, and we're very proud of you. Thank you.
The thirteen that were there achieved that stage based on a written competition in the classrooms, is that right? So you've made it through two competitions now, and good luck on the next one. I want to shake your hand. Bria, thank you very much.[290.27][290.27](Applause) You don't have to speak here, if you don't want to.[302.83][302.83](Laughter) Yeah, well. The next item is a presentation by the Valley Park, Lompoc Valley Park Recreation and Pool Foundation, of what they would propose for the pocket park, or, we were going to rename it a plaza or something, weren't we? In the old town, to help make the old town area more pedestrian-friendly and to provide some additional stimulus for people to come into our old town. And I'll ask who, John Lynn, are you the one that, or?
Tag team.
Tag team, okay.
Brought some persuasion along just in case. Good evening, my name is Ron Fink, I live in the City of Lompoc, and I was asked by John Lynn to be the chair of this committee to see what we could do about the downtown park. There's been a lot of discussion over the last few years, so what I'd like to stress is this is not our project alone. This is a partnership with the City of Lompoc Parks and Recreation, and we're really happy to enjoy that partnership. We've had a couple of meetings already with the city staff about this. Following presentation is just an overview of our efforts so far and our plans for the future. Our project team, Dan McCaffrey is representing the city, he's the project manager for the City of Lompoc. The Lompoc Valley Park Recreation and Pool Foundation project team represents a little over 200 years' worth of experience, and we hope that we can apply that experience to this project and produce something that the city and the people who live in it and the city administration would be proud of. I'm the project chairman, Bob Holloway is the construction guru and the project vice-chairman, Bob Manning, who's not here this evening, he's on travel, he's our treasurer, and Ralph Harmon is our secretary. The ideas we're going to present this evening were developed over a long period of time by several meetings with concerned citizens. Once the word got out that we were going to try to do this, people came to us and gave us their ideas. The plan we're going to present to you this evening is the sixth revision, and it's probably not the last, because we still need to meet with the Parks and Recreation Commission, and probably the Beautification Commission, and other such commissions and committees as the council may direct us to do. And with that, I'll turn it over to John Lynn and Derek Ramsey, and he'll give you a virtual tour of our park.
Okay, while it's booting up my Boy Scout commercial is, Derek Ramsey earned his Eagle Scout in Troop 103 and is pursuing a career in architecture. He's at the very beginning of it, but thankfully, his professors at Allen Hancock and some of the students who had been there longer jumped in and taught him how to do this. So this is a look-down view of the park, and one of the conceptual differences in this park is that it's designed so that anywhere you stand in the park, you can view murals. So...
Can you put the dash lines in?
Nope, they disappeared. Okay. If you were standing at the top of the fountain as we look at it, and you looked to either your right or your left, the trees do not obstruct your view of the large Wars mural, which is three stories high and 108 feet long, and that was one of the things that we set out to do. The original park design that was come up with quite a while ago had a fountain in it, and immediately below the arrow is the fountain, and at this point, it's a Spanish-style fountain to kind of give us a tie into the mission. And then around the fountain, you can see the four benches with a bush in the planter behind them, and as will be flowering bushes. And then all the way around the inside of the park, you see that kind of double line, that's a flower bed, and that allows for the planting of either annuals or perennials all the way around the park, so that it's designed to be a very flowerful park. As Ron mentioned, when he brought the brick up, the whole surface area of the park is either done with pavers, or until those pavers are set, it will be done with decomposed granite, so that over a number of years, people can buy dedication pavers and include them in the park and basically have ownership in the park. And then the small rectangles you see up toward the top and to the left are also flower beds. Each of the tree wells, which is raised above the ground to give the park some relief, has a bench on each side, so that you can come in and kick back under a tree and watch the world go by. Derek, can you target over on the patio, please? Okay, here we got the kind of look-in from the front view. Now realize that the fence we have on there is not the wrought iron, Spanish-style fence that we intend, but the one that we were able to get out of the 3D program. So the area back, that Derek's going to put the arrow on, is the patio area, right in front of the, in that area there, that would be an outside venue where groups of 70 to 80 could come and have an activity, perhaps a birthday party, or, I don't know, whatever. There's enough room there. Directly behind the patio, the large open space you see in the building is the art gallery space, and it has lots of nice high windows in it, so it's nice and bright and open. This will give you a vertigo. So the art gallery space is the one to the bottom. You want to stick the arrow on it, Derek? There we go. So that area in there is the art gallery space, and you'll notice that there are three large windows in the back of it, and next door are the two restrooms, and these restrooms are large enough to accommodate a tour bus coming and stopping at the park. And they also have large windows into the alley, so they'll be nice and bright. And there are windows above the doors in the front, so again, from the front side, you can see it. Now, the roof is torn off the building here. We don't really plan to do that in real life. We'll put the roof back on, I think, maybe, at a roof. And there's a set of archwork in front that allows us to support that facade, which is a Mission tile facade, and somebody's already brought forward, I think enough Mission tile to do it for free. And what that does is it hides our solar panels, which are back on the roof of the building, and one of the members of the committee who has a lot of solar experience has designed that for us, so that our meter will turn backwards during the day, and it will turn forward at night when we have some lights on in the facility. But during the day, all the illumination is either through the available windows, or in the restrooms, there are light tubes. And then on the green side of it, Ralph Harmon did some research and found us, I think it was Ralph, streetlights that are solar-powered, they're fully independent, the solar cell is part of the streetlight, and they charge up during the day and they run in the evening. Now, if we want them to run all night, it wouldn't work, but we're not, this is not an all-night park. And then at the very back of the park, there's an extension above the building, which is a wind wall that goes two and a half stories up, and it actually goes all the way over to the left, but we didn't get it quite into this drawing, so that you have that windbreak across the back of the park. Then coming forward on your right, down the side of the park, from the park building to the existing building is also a 22-foot wind wall, so that you will have a fully windless area back there. And then right where the arrow is, there's a door, and those doors open into the courtyard behind the adjoining building, which is the one the foundation's working on, and that will be another mural alcove where we would be able to display four to six murals, depending on their size. And there's also space on the back of the building for another mural. And these trees are in their initial stage, they would be a little bit bigger when fully grown, but again, they're not designed to dwarf the park, just to provide a nice shady place where you can come and sit and listen to the water run and have a good time. We showed our plan to Mr. Nigus, who donated the land, and he thought it was a good thing. There are probably 100 people's ideas in this, starting from the original ideas back from when the first park was designed and coming forward, and we went out there and kind of laid it all out on the ground and went, oops, that doesn't work. And this design will be laid out on the ground again to get another view of it. Now, let's see, what did I miss? Under the patio, there's a 10,000-gallon cistern that'll take the runoff from the building and probably the patio, and provide water to water the park during the year. It's designed to be a really low-maintenance park, so it'll have a lot of perennials, or a lot of annuals, so that you don't have to plant them all the time. And again, over time, the entire tread of the park is designed to be paid with these dedication pavers, approximately, I think, 15,000. So it'll provide the revenue, along with the dedications to the larger items, to build the park initially, but it'll provide a revenue stream over the long haul to do upgrades and improvements to the park, and it'll also provide a lot of people for a long time the ability to have some ownership. Because if your name's on it, then you care about it, and you'll be down there being involved in it. We appreciate the staff's help, and I think we've struck a perfect balance of us doing the things that we can do to save the city money, and the staff doing the things that we have no idea how to do and don't really want to learn. And so it's turned to be a really good thing, everybody's working really well together. Hope the council this evening would give some direction to move forward, and I'm available for your questions.
Thank you. Are there any comments from council at this time? Mr. Lingle.
Thank you, Mr. Lynn, Mr. Fink. Very nice presentation, thank you. Any estimated, originally this park was going to be costing the city approximately $1.3 million. Any estimation of what the cost will be to the city at this point?
The only cost to the city, as we envision it, would be the staff cost for overseeing the project, providing the utility connections to the edge of the alley, and if the city wanted to charge us building permit fees, we would expect the city to pay itself for the building permit fees. I don't exactly know how that would work, you know, legally, maybe you have to charge somebody, so that, and I think the thought was that RDA money would be used to cover those things. And with, in terms of our effort, we would, the actual construction cost of the park would be covered by the funds that we would be raising, which would be specifically used for this project.
And then one last question. Any estimate of, say we gave direction to move forward, any estimate of when the park would be available?
Yeah, Ron will address that.
Thank you.
He's the chair.
I have some more, you take that down, and we'll start back up with the PowerPoint. Okay. Sure. The right page here, Scope. Okay, Scope. This plan capitalizes on the original goals of the charrette. You remember, a long time ago, they had a group of people came together, and what they wanted was a placid park-like setting, focal point fountain, public restrooms, and a windbreak. And as you saw in John's presentation, it does all those things. In the process of us developing this, we said, hey, wait a minute, there's a lot of green technology out there. We can save our rainwater and use it for the rest of the year to water stuff, we can use low-voltage electrical systems to save power, and we can use solar energy to put some power back into grid, so that's what we plan to do. This is designed and built for low maintenance, there's going to be no grass in there, there'll be low-maintenance plantings, all metal work will be powder-coated to avoid the corrosion that we get in the area. We'll have all stainless steel plumbing fixtures in the bathrooms, and the building will be bomb-proof, pretty much. It'll be reinforced concrete block with stucco finish on it, so you can't hardly destroy it, we hope. And the landscape palette will actually be flexible for the future. If the city at some point in time, when we're finished with this, decided to do something else, there's plenty of flexibility in there to do whatever you wanted to do. Schedule, Councilman Lingle was asking a question about schedule. We anticipate a four-month planning, design, and approval process with, as a minimum, the parks and probably the beautification commissions, and maybe the city council may want to weigh in on it as well. When that approval process is complete, and we've submitted our plans, they've been reviewed by the city, and the city stamps them okay to proceed, we think it'll take us 12 months to build it. So how are we going to do that? Well, we plan on a green light construction schedule. That means nothing gets in our way, and we're moving straight ahead. We also plan to do it in three different phases. First phase, of course, is the groundwork. You do all the groundwork, you set the tank in the ground, you do all the underground infrastructure, and then we plan to construct the building and do the landscaping in parallel. And that'll cut down our construction time considerably, number one, and number two, it'll dress up the area rather quickly. The way we can do that is we're able to use the adjacent property, as you recall, you had some difficulty with the property next door. There's this pretty sizable laydown area over there, and we can use that to store our materials, we can use the building for our construction offices, so we can go off of the site. Now, if you had a contractor do this, they would have to find a laydown area for all our equipment. We have one right next door. We hope to have ribbon-cutting by July 4th, 2011. As you can see, that's a fairly aggressive schedule, but as we move through this, we hope that we can move through the approval process rather smartly, and then we can get down to construction. Okay, I just covered that. Funding. This is going to be the interesting part, funding. Each of you cast a very wide net in the city, and we encourage you to go out there and let people know that we want to build this money with donated money. And what that means is, is the foundation is a nonprofit organization, you can get your tax benefit from contributing to this, and every dollar or everything that you contribute for this project goes directly into the project. There isn't any money for construction management or anything else. We work for free. We're all geezers, and we've got nothing else to do, so we'll go down there and build this park. We are, we have a monetary donation plan for naming rights for various things, dedications, monuments, our pavers, entry fence and gate, and the landscaping in the park. And this, of course, will be a plan that we'll submit to the city through Parks and Rec, and we'll get you to approve that plan, so that we don't step on any legal toes. Donated construction materials, we'll capitalize on all of those that we can get. We've already had some people come forward to us and say, hey, I want to be part of this project, I want to do it. We're going to use only licensed contractors in the state of California for design, structural and concrete, grading, mechanical, electrical, solar, and landscaping, so there won't be any issues with, is it built right? Because the city will be inspecting it, and the contractors will correct any deficiencies at that point in time. Responsibilities. The way we see it is the City of Lompoc is the overall project manager for this project. We hope that you'll acquire all of the permits or issue the permits that are necessary to build it, that you'll provide whatever utility services are needed and the proper connections so we can feed back into the grid, and that eventually, when we're finished building the project, that the city would then assume operation and maintenance of the completed project. For our part, we are going to do the design, but we won't do that in a vacuum, we'll do that with the city. We plan to solicit more ideas. Like I said, we did six iterations of this plan already, at this stage, it's just basically in pencil, we can change it. So this is the time to do that, and then we'll go build it. In summary, the Lompoc Valley Park Recreation and Pool Foundation looks forward to completing a downtown park that will be functional and beautiful in cooperation with the City of Lompoc. In addition, we hope that the city would put a webcam on the building that's just to the north of the park, to look down on the park, so the people can go online and see how the park is progressing, how we're doing, you know, are there still weeds growing in, or are there tractors out there digging stuff up? As well, we need a name for the park, and what we would suggest is the city might do a little naming contest, and you can come up with how you want to do that. If we don't have a name for the park, it's hard to go out and tell people, hey, we're going to develop this vacant lot over there on South H, you want to help with that? We'd kind of like to have a name for it. So as soon as we can get a name for the park, the easier it's going to be for us to raise funds. And that's the end of my presentation, if you have any questions, you're free to ask.
Ms. Martner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to thank the Lompoc Valley Park Recreation and Pool Foundation, LVPRPF. Thank you very much, Mr. Fink and Mr. Lynn. I'd like to make a comment, not necessarily a question, and that is, I don't see anything here about a budget.
Right.
And as you know, I tend to worry very much about budgets. And usually, it's nice to have an idea, more or less, what the budget is before we even start, certainly before we start the project, but even, you know, there might have to be some design changes to adjust to the budget. Like if I go and do a remodel in my house, I want to get an idea first of how much money can I spend before I go and, you know, go ahead with the design. So I'm not putting the burden on you to come up with a budget, but I would like, ask you, as well as the city, to sit down and start drafting a budget as soon as possible.
Certainly, as soon as we address the memorandum of understanding between the city and us, so that we know what we're going to do. As far as construction goes, that's our budget, we'll take care of it. It's, you know, the city has no money in that budget. As far as the budget goes for the city-provided items, I would suspect that Dan McCaffrey will be able to give you some insight into how much that will cost. I can't imagine it'll be an exorbitant amount of money. I think you already got, what, a half a million dollars left in the fund to build it?
You should mention that we've already done preliminary...
Yeah, we've got a preliminary budget, but as of right now, we don't have a project yet, because we don't have a memorandum of understanding, and you all haven't said, yeah, go do it. You know, that's the next step, somebody needs to say, yeah, go do it. And we need to get together with Mr. Pinone over there and develop a memorandum of understanding about what we're going to do, and then we'll have a budget.
And the other thing I think is important is, once we've gone through the process with the next couple of commissions, and the design is a little more set in cement, because literally, we've redrawn it six times, then we'll be a little closer to the number. Now, we've already got a plumbing budget, and we've got a construction budget, and we have a pretty good idea of the cost of the trees, and we know how much the pavers are, but some of these things at the end, we haven't got nailed down yet.
Yeah, I guess I want to emphasize perhaps to the city side, one of my primary concerns here would be maintenance. I mean, you're talking about a fairly large restroom here. I don't know whether that's needed to that extent or whatever, but maintenance will be something that we'll have to budget every year for it. So I really, you know, it's, the burden is not on the foundation at this time, but it is on the city to really, you know, start crunching out numbers on maintenance and the budget on our side.
Yeah, we're very sensitive to that, and our goal is to provide you with a project that is a very low-maintenance project, that won't require a lot of attention.
Councilwoman Roget.
Thank you. I too wanted to commend you. I know it's been a lot of hard work, and we spent a lot of time on this. I think it's exciting we can work together, have a community and city project. I'm totally in favor of that, and Ron, I'd like to say, go do it, but we do have to consult our attorney and some of the legal problems about having liability on the work site and all that, and some of the design changes. Now personally, I would like to see more trees in there, but that's me. I would have put in a few more trees, it looks a little sparse in there, but we're not getting into the design of it right now. But thank you so much, and I want to thank all the community members who participated too. I think it's going to turn out to be a really nice project that we can all be proud of. So thank you both.
We'll, I'm last, I get to make my call, no. Tony?
Well, I too, I agree with Councilmember Roget and Councilmember Martner. I'm impressed. I've talked with especially John, Mr. Lynn, a couple of times about the project, and via email with you, Ron, yeah, anyway. I think it's a great idea. Again, you know, we can't do anything, obviously, until we have our little meeting, but taking it from a 1.6 to where we're at right now, joining hands together, working together, that's what a community's all about. So you guys, good job.
Thank you. I'll open it up at this time, if any of the public would like to come forward and comment. There's no action being proposed tonight for the city council, other than to approve in concept and ask the staff to continue to work with the foundation to put together the plans that we can approve in the future. So if there are any comments from the public on what's been presented tonight, I'd be glad to hear them. Just state your name, and whether or not you're a resident of the city.
I'm a resident of the city, my name is Archie Mitchell. I think it's an outstanding project, however, I was just curious about what is being done and what will be done to the Lompoc lookout point. Has that area been abandoned, or what is the status of that?
That's not on, it's not a part of this project, but I think we can find out, unless someone up here knows. That is in the county.
Right.
Not a city, not a city project, and the county did not have, to the best of my knowledge, the funds to repair the road or do anything to open it up, so the last time I checked into it.
Right.
There was some major damage done to the road growing up there.
Exactly.
And the last time they allowed vehicles to use it was back when we had the flower field in town, and they allowed only a few private vehicles to go up there, so it could be photographed from that point. And then I think they took bus tours of people up to see it.
Right.
And then I think they took bus, bus tours of people up to see it. But if you've, you've left your phone number there, we'll, we'll see if we get some information from the county.
Well, I'm on the Santa Barbara County hiking trails and, and hiking trails committee, advisory committee. And I know that, I got the impression it was, it was, it was joint county and city jurisdiction. And anyway, as I said, I use the trail quite a bit and I, I think it has a lot of potential from the lookout point. And I was, as I said, I wanted to just find out if something could be done or if, you know, if, if the site has been abandoned because it gets a lot of uses and I think it's a, you know, it's a prime spot and it could really be, maybe Lompoc Beautification could get involved or some volunteers could get involved. I'm, I'm certainly willing to get involved in something like that because when I first came in in 77, I used to drive up to the top and, and utilize it quite, you know, quite frequently. So I think it has a lot of potential.
Thank you. Anybody else like to, to comment tonight? Right now, on, on the pocket park proposed for Old Town. Seeing no one rise, I'll bring you back. And I, I had only a couple of, a couple of questions, Mr. Fink, Mr. Lynn. One, it may be too big, it may not be possible to incorporate it in this park, but there is a flagpole in Ryan Park in the parking lot which was donated to the city to commemorate the, the major presence of the Navy in the first half of the last century here. And it's not being used. It's in the parking lot where very little goes on in Ryan Park and the flag is not being flown and most people probably don't even recognize what the plaques are, are there for. And, and this park will have use and I, and I wondered if this, if that could be incorporated in it. Well, I went down and took a look at that flagpole and the base of it is very severely corroded and I'd really want to know that that pole is structurally sound. Now, we could lop the top off of it and move it. We could do that. Of course, that wouldn't be the original height of the pole. The second thing is that pole would be significantly higher than anything that's in the area. So we need to take a look at that with the city engineer a little bit. I know flagpoles are difficult to place because of the amount of concrete you got to put in the ground to, to anchor the thing so it won't blow over. So, yeah, we, we could take a look at that and. Just, just take a look at it and, and my other thought is, and you mentioned it a couple of times in your briefing, is that you wanted a place where people can stop and, stop in while they're shopping, while they're pedestrians in Old Town. They can kick back and watch the world go by. You've got the trees and the fountain and the other things for that. But to me, the big wrought iron fence and gate in the front is an impediment to the openness that you want to have for, for a pedestrian-friendly Old Town. And I don't know how, I'm, I'm sure it's needed for, for security and, and as, as open as you can make it, to make it friendly to the people on the street. That was the only, other than that, I'll echo everything else that was set up here. You put a lot of work into it. I thank you for what you've done and we don't have any other comments other than to, to expect staff to work with you. Okay, it'll have a very, very large gate, entry gate.
Okay, go ahead.
I do have one, one other question. When we talked about this before, you, you talked about having an area, and I'm assuming it's in that big room on the northwest portion of the facility, for citizens to go in and paint, do their paintings and, and display them?
Well, the, the idea was that we would offer, it's about a thousand square feet and it's an open ceiling and we'd offer that up to the, the art gallery to either expand or move into. Of course, that'd be up to Parks and Rec what that could be used for, but that, that was the idea, was to offer a venue. And the, the second thing was that the, the wind wall that we have to construct, we would put anchorages on there so you could put murals on there that were being painted to be moved somewhere else in the city so that the mural society would have a place where they could sit down and, and paint their murals and have a place to sit down, take it easy, restrooms and so forth and so on. So that was the idea. So.
Thank you.
But it's up to Parks and Rec how they want to manage it. We'll just offer up the opportunity.
I think the other, the other concept with regard to having the art gallery there is to have the park attended because we tend to have less mischief when there's an, when it's attended. And to the, to the mayor's point about the fence, we're sensitive to that too, but we've seen the problems that existed at the building next door and we don't want to recreate that. So we want a nice open style and a local artisan has volunteered to actually fabricate the fence for us. All we have to do is provide the material and he'll build us something really nice and that'll look really good.
Thank you. If there's nothing else, we'll move on to the next item, the city administrator's status report. Do you have anything more to, to report to us tonight, or the city?
Not tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Council requests or announcements. The first item, as I mentioned earlier, the letter that was received by the Ministerial Association will be moved down and addressed under item six. At this time, are there any council, any other council comments? Ms. Roger?
I have a couple. Last Saturday, I was fortunate to help out at the Women in Chambers Chalkaholics event. It was very successful and I know our president, Dulce Sin, I don't know, she's planning to get up tonight and thank the public for helping out with that. We cleared a lot of money and the money all went for, is going for scholarships for re-entry women. And I especially want to thank a friend of mine, Eva, who helped me out by making some brownies for the event. They were really good and they got eaten up very fast. I was in a meeting this afternoon about our fourth, upcoming Fourth of July event. Joanne Plummer is chairing that and we are thinking about having the Fourth of July event again. Last year, we were very successful because the community came together and donated the funds for us to go on with that event. We're now looking at doing it again and we do need the community's help. We plan to have a meeting, our next meeting on March the 9th at the Anderson Center at four o'clock. If you're interested in helping with that, we certainly need a bigger committee to work on this. And we will be sending out letters and making phone calls to all of you who helped us out this, the last year. And it was a great event and I hope we can do it again. Thank you.
Ms. Martin.
I'd like to make two announcements that actually they were announced at the last session and I guess council member Roger didn't mention it this time, is the Fire and Ice, Firefighters Foundation fundraiser that is going to be on February 27th at 6:00 PM at the Elks Lodge. I encourage you to come. This is a wonderful event for the community and is for a great cause, to help our firefighters. You can get tickets from council member Roger as well as Lynn Howerton. The other one, which is, I don't know if council member Lingal is going to mention, the Rotary Club at the Vets Building. It's having a wine tasting event on February 27th. Oh, I'm sorry, February 20th. Why don't you take over that one? Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, the Rotary Club of Lompoc is putting on a, on the afternoon of Saturday, February 28th, there'll be a wine tasting. Sunday, I'm sorry, Sunday, February 28th. Yeah, you want to take the mic? It's a, it's a wine tasting event. There will be, I believe, 28, 29, 30 different wineries from the Santa Rita Hills pouring wine. There will be food that is being catered by Sissy's Up Down Cafe. There'll be silent auction, live auction. All proceeds from this event go to help restore the Veterans Building at the top of H Street. They're looking to raise approximately $60,000 to help restore that building. Great event. Tickets are available. You can get them at the Chamber of Commerce or, I, I'm selling them, but you know, probably Chamber of Commerce would have them most, more available. So I look forward to seeing you all there. Even if you don't drink wine, the food, the auction, the camaraderie, it's a great event. So please plan on attending. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lingal. The only, the only comment I have, I did receive correspondence from Mr. Mark McSkirin, who is the coordinator of the 2010 Census for the North Santa Barbara County. And he wanted to take a moment to offer congratulations to the city of Lompoc for having a dedicated, such a dedicated staff of workers who are furthering the census program. He especially mentioned Dan McCaffrey, Richard Fernbaugh as two of the star performers in helping the city get ready for the census. He also mentioned some staff, people that he was thrilled to work with and thrilled with the creativity of Angela Nguyen, Dinah Lockhart, Charidah Weigle, and Lucille Breeze. So the census is off and running and we have a, a, a staff here who's been commended for helping to get ready, Lompoc ready for that head count. At this time, we'll move on to oral communications. Public is invited to talk to us about anything that's city business. If you're, if you're going to talk to us about something that's on the agenda later on, I'd prefer if you can to hold it till that point because then we'll be able to give more attention to your, your views and your comments. If you can't stay that late and you want to talk about the item now, we'll, we'll certainly listen to you. We ask you to come forward, state your name, fill out a speaker's card, give your name and phone number to the, to the city clerk, state your name and just state whether or not you're a resident of the city of Lompoc. And at that time, we'll, with that, we'll open the, open the, the lecturing for public
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, my name is Morris Sobani. We are the owner of the industrial park on Seventh and Industrial Way. We have been very fortunate to have this wine industry in our complex and it's referred to very affectionately as Ghetto. And you see National Magazine, newspaper take, mention this location. Every weekend, when the tasting rooms are open, we have a large number of people across the state of California, sometime from Nevada, come up here for wine tasting. And it's become a very popular location and it's given an opportunity, business opportunity for the city of Lompoc. I have been involved in this thing for the past 11 years and we have not made any effort to bring this industry to this town. This is one of those lucky things that city of Lompoc has inherited and it's been good for the city. And I feel we should do everything possible to nourish and nurture this industry. It would be a great mistake if we ignored this aspect of this industry and take it for granted. We might not make the most of it. And the reason I'm here tonight, we, because of the popularity of this location, many winemakers from other states, out of the county, would like to have a representation in this loca, this location. They would like to have a tasting room. And we have accommodated them. But then the city planning commission wrote to some of our tenants saying that since you do not have a wine-making facility in this location, you are not authorized to have a wine tasting room. The ordinance allows up to 15% of the facility to be used for commercial use. And as such, if a winemaker is making their wine in Paso Robo or Solvang or Beulton, they are not allowed to be in the zone. Now, they could come to downtown area and have a wine tasting room, but that doesn't do the proper thing for them because people come up here in this area for tasting to come to Ghetto area. And I have approached the city planning staff and said, "They should consider this 15% as a total picture of 80,000 square feet instead of going individual tenants." You know, we had similar situation years back when we had a church requirement. The church are allowed to be in the industrial park. There was a requirement said that in order for us to allow a church to come to this zone, the building had to be vacant for six months. So we went to the city planning department and said, "Hey, we have had vacancy in our place and we should look at the overall picture. We have had, we could show you, we have had six vacancies for six months, then this tenant could take all of these units, that's fine." So I'm saying that to promote this business and allow this wine industry to thrive, we should interpret this 50% ordinance to take the overall picture instead of taking one unit. And I don't think, we are not asking to change the ordinance or make any exception. We are saying to have a broader interpretation, more liberal interpretation of this ordinance to accommodate people, to accommodate this industry. I see, does that mean I'm time, my time is up or?
It means you should be wrapping up.
I'm wrapping.
It's going to turn red real, it's going to turn red real quick.
Thank you, Mr. Sobani. I'm not going over, Lingal.
Thank you, Mr. Sobani.
You cut me a really good time.
Thank you very much.
But anyway, I'm asking that if you would consider to, to encourage the planning department to, to have a broader interpretation, no harm will be done for this thing. You just accommodate people in this business and we are not asking any more.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak at this time?
My name is Jason Reynolds and yes, I'm a resident of the city. Hi, council and mayor. I'd like to actually just piggyback on Mr. Sobani's comments. I'm here to actually represent the local Chamber of Commerce here in Lompoc and we've done quite a bit of work with the local businesses that is, that this is currently affecting. We do feel like this is a, this is a piece of our economy here in Lompoc that is thriving and does have the ability to, to really grow over the next few years, but we do have to put our arms around it. We do feel like this does, this is in line with the 2020 vision that the city has put its, its, you know, its stamp on and, you know, the wine industry being a leg of that, this is kind of how we're, we're there to support it. Really, what we're here to, to, to really do is just to make sure that this becomes a priority. We've done some homework. We've, we've spoken a little bit about how this text amendment would work to, to again kind of liberalize that 15% piece, but what we've been told is the amount of time that it may take. And, and really, time is money with these folks and we've got some folks waiting on the sidelines to get in. We've got some folks that it's affecting right now and we really feel like if, if something's not done immediately, we have the, the risk of losing these folks to some of our competing towns that, that are kind of opening their arms and embracing this piece. So that's where we're at. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds.
Evening. I'm John Lawrence from City of Lompoc. First off, I question why the bed tax can't be put on the June ballot? I see that there are another initiatives and proposals and people being, putting their names in for election. Why can't we have it on the June ballot? This is for Mayor Zaminsky. We see that the Caltrans, the Santa Luis Municipal Council of Governments and the Santa Barbara County Association of Governments are still discussing the widening of the Santa Maria River Bridge until such time that 101 north of the river is widened to three lanes. What is accomplished by widening the bridge? The choke point has just moved to the north side of the river. We feel that all state highway funding in Santa Barbara County should be directed to the widening of 101 south of Santa Barbara. This project affects more people than widening the Santa Maria River Bridge. Do not lose sight of the priorities because the project is located in the North County. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence.
Evening, Mayor. Members of council, Ralph Arman, representing the Lompoc Firefighters Foundation tonight. I want to thank Councilperson Martin for her, her remarks and reminding everybody of the Fire and Ice Ball coming up in a couple of weeks on the 27th. But what I'd like to do tonight is publicly thank many of the merchants in the Lompoc area. Being on the committee, I get to view all the nice auction items that are coming up. I can tell you there are some beautiful things that are going to be available for auction and so people will really be surprised, I think. But the merchants of Lompoc have been very supportive of the foundation and we appreciate that. The wine industry has been mentioned tonight. They too have been supportive of the foundation with the wine that is being donated and we certainly appreciate that too. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Harmon.
I'm Antonio Moretti. I'm a resident of Lompoc, the city, and I'm here for the matter that Mr. Sobani just brought up about the Sobani Center, better known as the Wine Ghetto. My wife and I, we moved here about a year ago, because we like the area, but besides that, we understand what's going on with the wine business. I've been involved in that for about 30 years now, and we really like to see this area developing. Matter in fact, like I say, we moved here about a year ago, and we purchased some land with the house with the intention to plant vineyards. In the meantime, since I'm here, I try to put together a few of the local producer and open a tasting room for them. These are small producers, they can't afford to open a single tasting room, each one of them. So I went to Mr. Sobani and asked him if he had room for a space to lease for a new tasting room. He said yes, but then, in the meantime, I find out there was this regulation about the zoning that limited 15% about tasting room, and the other 85% for production. In the meantime, I don't have any production, but like I say, I like to have a tasting room, but at that point, I find out I can't. So I'm here to support if, you know, this regulation can be looked, eventually modified, no change, but modify, so it can open the door to people like me, in preparation of having my own production, which we are starting to plan this coming spring. So it will take a few years before I have production of the vineyards that become mature to make the wine. I would like to represent this small producer, and I'm here, like I say, to support the regulation eventually to be looked over and changed. Thank you.
Thank you, Antonio. To anyone else?
This is the first time I've done this, so bear with me. So good evening, Mayor and City Council. And excuse my voice, I have horrendous cold right now. My name is Bob Nicolason, I have Nicolason Family Vineyards and Winery. I do have a space in Sobani Industrial Park, so I'm coming to talk about that. I am one of the ones that lives up in Paso Robles area, but I purchase all of my fruit, and I purchase it all from Santa Barbara County, and feel closer connection down here, grape and winery-wise, than I do as far as a tasting room and things like that. And came into Sobani Park about a year and a half ago, which has been great, I love it, and I am one of the ones that's currently under investigation for the 15% rule, as somebody had filed a written complaint. There are two of us that are being investigated right now. Basically, I would, part of why I'm here is to, I know there's a request to, like Mr. Sobani has said, to change the, instead of looking at each individual business, looking at the whole industrial park, is 15%. Currently, where I'm at, my tasting room area is about 16% to 17%, and I've been going through this for over four months, and I'm still not signed off yet. And I do not make wine here, I do my storage here, I do all of my shipping and receiving here, I do a fair amount of direct order and mail order business, and all of that takes place down here. And one other thing, too, that I notice is, when we, part of my dilemma is I've got a very odd office space that was pre-existing when I came in and rented the space. So when you go in and lease a building that has been through other tenants and already been modified by them, you're not walking into a blank canvas that you can create exactly what you want. And without moving walls and things like that, you kind of deal with the cards that you're dealt, and that's part of one of my issues is right now, I think, with the city looking and measuring all of my square footage and things like that. So I know Antonio, the space that he's thinking about is 600 square feet, and his 15% would be 90 square feet. So I would also, if things can't be changed, maybe there could be an amendment or also a way of looking at it of a minimum. You know, if you've got 15,000 square feet, it's easy to deal with 2,500 square feet and move it around, when you've got a little tiny space that exists. Giving somebody the size of a closet isn't real functional, even just from an aesthetic standpoint, regardless of functionality. So, and I'll also add that my, it's not the funnest time economically right now, and my business has been down 70% for the last six months, and I'm just fighting for my life tooth and nail financially. And this whole thing is kind of an added stress that, for me, hasn't accomplished a whole lot. I'm as close as I can possibly get, and I'm still not getting closed out and all that good stuff. So anyway, the request on my part would be to, again, if this can be done, to bring it up, maybe on a higher priority. Last I heard is that if it could be changed, it would be at least a year out. And I know there's businesses that can't wait that long, they're gonna go somewhere else. And that's it.
Thank you, Ma'am.
Thank you.
You did well.
Thank you for my time.
Okay.
And my voice.
Yeah. Hi, my name is Joan Montalvo, and I do not live in the city, I live in Vanderburg Village. I work in the Lompoc Wine Ghetto at one of the tasting rooms. We were one of the tasting rooms that were affected. We are fine now, because, you know, we do packing and shipping and things out of our tasting room, and I've managed to get my little tasting spot down to 15%. I will tell you, though, that if we don't get this sort of pushed along fairly quickly, like some of the others said, that, you know, I don't want to lose any more potential people in that area. It's amazing to see, you know, hopefully the city, you know, can come and utilize our little Lompoc Wine Ghetto. It's wonderful to see how many out-of-town guests we have. And I've been in the industry since 2005, and working at various spots in the Lompoc Wine Ghetto. And more and more, each month, each weekend, it's amazing that the people that come in, the first thing I ask them is, where are you staying? And the majority, you know, I find are saying, Lompoc, you know, getting to know our hotels. Because it is a destination now, we have more than just one or two spots there for people to come in and visit. So, you know, I hope that we can all sort of grab a hold of it and make it work for everybody. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Montalvo.
Mayor, members of the council, I'm Denny Anderson, President and CEO of the Lompoc Valley Chamber of Commerce and Visitors Bureau. And I just, a couple of quick things. Joan just talked about what we've termed at the chamber as the new visitor. These are people who are coming, who have not been here before, and they are attracted because of Santa Rita Hills and the Wine Ghetto, and all the things that we have to offer now. And we're learning about this new jewel that we have here in the Lompoc Valley, being our wine industry. And I think we've got, I've likened this to a shooting gallery, because it's all new, these targets keep popping up, and we have to address them, I think, to accommodate what's coming. And I'd just finally like to say that currently, in the Sobani Industrial Park, the square footage dedicated to this kind of thing is 2,950 feet, approximately. There are four vacancies there. If we went to the full 15% for the entire park, which is about 78,000 square feet, if I recall, that would give us the opportunity for 11,000 square feet to accommodate that 15%. And with four vacancies, there's no way we're gonna ever get to that amount, based on what we know. And is there a fear factor out there? What happens in five or 10 years if we change it? Well, we just react and fix it, if something goes south on it. But right now, we have an opportunity that we need to take advantage of. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Doris Lawrence, and I'm not very good at this, standing up and greeting you people, but I have concerns about illegal usage of properties in the town. We have noticed in our travel around this town that there are quite a number of people having electrical cords running from garage to driveways to backyards. These are not temporary, but found there every day. We all know they are possibly undocumented people, or maybe legal, living with permanent residence within the city limits. These homeowners or renters are found to be landlords, are renting these garages or outbuildings to people who are illegal, or illegal again, and the fines should be charged and received to help fund the general funds. Another possible way to fill the coffers of the general fund is to check for possible illegal building permits. A few travels by city employees, and I don't know who in the city employees would do it, within the city limits, might find more illegal buildings with their property, within their property lines. Joan and I lived in Orange County, California, for a while, and I was visiting a friend in Garden Grove, Orange County, one day, and they have street sweeping, and they posted when the street sweepers will be sweeping each street. I did not see the sign, and my friend forgot it was the day for her street to be swept. I parked in front of her house. My friend heard the street sweeper and told me to park my car on her driveway. I scooted out and saw he was one block away, and I noticed there was a code enforcer driving ahead of the sweeper. They scooted up and nailed me. I still got my car in the drive before the sweeper arrived, but I was fined $42. In Lompoc, the city can make a fortune on fines for parking on street sweeping day. I am sure I have not covered other reasons for collecting fines for illegal usage in Lompoc. My husband and I will be at the council meeting tonight, and we are here. I intend to present this message, which I have, and hope that there is some way that you could help us. Thank you.
Thank you, Doris Lawrence. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak this time? Seeing no one rise, I'll bring it back to the council. City Administrator Barcelona could, and I'm sure all of us are interested in the story on the ghetto, and could we get a memo from you explaining the issues from the planning side, and maybe have Mr. Panoni also look at that from the legal side, and let us know what's going on. There's also...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
If you'll excuse, I would like to ask if actually it is possible to agendize it and discuss it. It appears to be, you know, a matter that needs a fair amount of priority. I don't know whether it needs to be agendized at the city council level or at the planning commission, and how that works, but I think that our city needs to be responsive to this request as soon as possible.
Can we, if we can get a memo and then determine whether there's a problem? Councilman Lingle, did you have a comment? No, okay. Thank you, Ms. Martner.
I'll get with you and show you the schedule. I dug out and brought with me a schedule, it's for the November election, what it takes. But we will be working with, it takes just about this much time, because there's a lot of work to be done now before we can go to the county, whereas somebody that's running for an established office can just go to the county and apply. But I'll get the schedule with you. And we have asked that the subject of the bed tax increase be on a future council agenda, and it will be coming up soon.
Mr. Mayor, can I back up a minute?
Sure.
Councilmember Martner asked that we agendize the Wine Ghetto issue, and then you didn't follow up with that, or what are we gonna do?
Okay, I...
I would like to agendize it, too.
Wouldn't you rather wait, see if there's a problem? See what the...
I talked to Arlene Pelster this morning, and I'm pretty clear on what the problem is.
I think, you know, as part of the agenda item would be the discussion of what the issue is and all of that, but I'd like to bring it to the council as soon as possible, because there is a time issue here. And we constantly talk about economic development and bring further revenues to the city. The Wine Ghetto is certainly a revenue maker for the city, so I'd like to have it, you know, paid a close attention to it. So I guess I'd like to put it on the floor again, but I would like to have it agendized.
Do we have a third member?
I'll second that one.
Do you have a third member that wants to...
I'll third it, but I would also like to know, or at least hear the answer from the city administrator on your question, if it's available.
The item can be agendized, and staff will put it on the agenda for next meeting.
Then I do third the motion.
Thank you. Any other, any other response to the public comments? Ladies and gentlemen, we started at 6:00, it's been more than two hours. I'm gonna ask for about a 10-minute break, so that we can stretch and do whatever we've gotta do, and I'm sorry to do that to you, because I know we started the meeting late. May I have your Slumpok pin?
Yeah.
I want to give it to a young lady out here.
Absolutely, I know where they're at.
Oh, okay, good. Good. I know many of you are here for the item on prayer, and I told some of you during the break that that was the next item up. I lied. The next item should be very...
I allegedly?
Yeah. The next item should be very quickly, but we have consent calendar. There's several routine items on the consent calendar that we will take as one motion. We'll ask the council, what are your wishes with respect to the items on consent? Mr. Lingle?
I move to accept the consent calendar as written.
I second it.
We've had a motion, and a second, and a third. Let's vote. The items on the consent calendar are all approved. Now we will go to unfinished business. We have a city council handbook that has a lot of policies and a lot of procedures for the way we run our meetings. The one that I think most people are here for is the one as to whether we will continue to have prayer, how we will have the prayer, if we do continue at our meetings. So I'm gonna ask that we split the item and take that one for discussion, and go through it, and tentatively approve a policy at the council level, and then roll that into the remaining policies as a second phase, and then pass the resolution to approve the council handbook in that way. So let's start first, and who do I turn to? Laurel, or do I turn to Mr. Panoni to review the policy on prayer?
Mr. Mayor, I'll defer to city attorney, Mr. Panoni.
Thank you, Mayor. What we've attempted to do is place in your handbook a revision to the existing policy, which was pretty basic, and just said, no sectarian prayer. And we thought we would add to that by indicating the importance that the council and the community has with regard to having guidance from beyond. And what we wanted to do was also stand on that fence that I'm required to guide you when we're dealing with issues such as this. The court system has determined that public agencies can't promote sectarianism, basically. And in order to avoid that possibility of someone challenging the city, because some handbook policy you have could be read to mean that you're promoting sectarianism, I drafted it in such a way that it, I believe, provides the incentive that you wanted, which was to provide an opportunity for those who want to speak inspirationally or provide guidance, inspirational guidance, before a council meeting, and yet not run afoul of the concern that the courts have. I know it's a sensitive issue, and I know it's important for all to be heard, and so my suggestion, obviously, is to go with the wording that I have, understanding that if you wanted to take a different approach, you certainly have the authority to do that, just recognize that it then becomes a risk analysis on, do you... Just recognize that it then becomes a risk analysis on, do you wanna get closer to the line, from my perspective, closer to the line, which increases the likelihood of the possibility of a challenge? And the worst, um, event, in my opinion, that could happen is, you could have a court say you can't have invocations at all. However you wanna call them, no, because you're beyond the, the pale. I'm not suggesting that someone would do that, challenge you. I'm just saying, my job is to let you know those are the risks, and I try to couch something to minimize those risks.
Thank you, Mr. Panoni. What I'd like to do is read the words that are proposed to be adopted, so you can, and then, and then have the public speak to them. Uh, I, I, I will also comment that since we started dealing with this issue some four months ago, I guess, um, I have had, at times, as many as twenty-five emails in one day. Uh, just yesterday, I had three. I'm still getting them. Uh, nationwide, the message has gone out that we're dealing with the issue, and a lot of people have their views on this issue. Initially, the majority of the emails, the more, most of the correspondence, was urging us to lighten up and allow what I would define as sectarian prayer, uh, preaching a particular, uh, uh, brand of religion. Uh, but most recently, I guess over the last thirty days, probably seventy-five percent have been from people who have said there is no place for prayer here. Uh, they're, um, they're telling me that, um, if they want to attend a meeting to see how a park is going to be built, or if they want to attend a meeting, uh, they have a right to not be subject to something that they don't believe in. Uh, so there is strong feeling on both sides. When Mr. Panoni talks about being careful that we could get a lawsuit, uh, if we cross the line, uh, I, I, I point, I point out the, the amount of correspondence that I've received to indicate, uh, just how, uh, how much this is being watched. The suggested words in our policy handbook concern invocations, and the policy that is proposed for us, uh, reads, "The courts have concluded sectarian prayer as part of a city council meeting is not permitted under the Constitution. To meet that legal requirement, the city council will allow, on a rotating basis, one person to provide an invocation consisting of inspiring words at the beginning of a council meeting, a beginning of each council meeting. Any person providing that invocation will be expected to follow the above legal requirements. If someone does not follow those requirements, then that person shall be removed from the rotation list. During the public comment period of any regular council meeting, the city council will not impinge on any person's constitutional right to provide inspiring words they choose about matters of public interest which are within the city council's jurisdiction." So this is, this, this, this does not pertain to the public comment period. It only pertains to the item on the agenda calling for an invocation, uh, that, that we will have one person on a rotating basis lead us with, uh, at the beginning of a meeting. And, uh, and those words are the draft that has been given to us for our consideration. And is there anything that the council would like to, to state at this time before we hear from the public? Well, seeing none, I'll, uh, open the public comment on just this part of the policies alone, and, uh, and, and afterwards, then we'll go into the other, the other policies if anybody has any comments on it. Mr. Reverend Petty?
Mayor, council members, Mr. Panoni. I speak on behalf of the Lompoke—I'm Steve Petty.
Thank you.
Pastor of First Methodist Church. I don't live in Lompoke, but my church has been here longer than any other Protestant denomination in town. I speak on behalf of the Lompoke Interfaith Alliance and the Lompoke Ministerial Association, both of which endorse the statement, which I printed on the Lompoke record and circulated to all the council members. We strongly feel that this is the best answer to the question before us. When the Second District Court of Appeal upheld the decision of the LA Superior Court in Rubin versus City Burbank, it also upheld the rationale of Judge Williams that since invocation appeared on the agenda, was a regular part of the council meetings, took place on public property, and sought spiritual guidance for the council in its deliberations, then an objective viewer might conclude that the city endorsed that specific faith statement. Thus, if a reasonable person were—if a person offering the invocation prayed to a particular deity, then it would appear that the council approved and endorsed a belief in that deity. Rather than insisting that the council take care to avoid such appearances, they simply threw out all sectarian prayers completely. In this case, I believe the court erred. The United States Supreme Court in Marsh versus Chambers in nineteen eighty-three ruled prayers before the Nebraska legislature by its chaplain did not violate the Establishment Clause of the First Amendment as long as there was no intentional sectarian bias. Chief Justice Warren Burger wrote that invocations before such meetings were, quote, "simply a tolerable acknowledgement of beliefs widely held among the people of the community." The court concluded, and I quote, "The content of the prayer is not of concern to the judges, where, as here, there is no indication that the prayer opportunity has been exploited to proselytize or advance anyone, or to disparage any other faith or belief. That being so, it is not for us to embark on a sensitive evaluation or to parse the content of a particular prayer," unquote. So invocations are clearly allowed by the laws of the land and upheld by the Supreme Court. Nevertheless, recently, many municipalities have solved the problem by simply removing the invocation from the agenda completely. As both the Interfaith Alliance and the Ministerial Association discussed this issue, it became clear that we all feel it is important for invocations to continue in Lompoke. Further, both groups feel that the council should bend over backward to assure that all the representative faith communities in Lompoke have an opportunity to offer such invocations. We are sensitive to the fact that the overwhelming majority of these invocations have carried a Christian bias, and we ask that the council take action to ensure that this does not continue to be the case.
Reverend Petty?
Yeah.
Can we ask you to wrap up? Five minutes goes fast.
Especially for a preacher.
Especially for a preacher. Well, I represent two groups, so maybe you could let me finish. We do, therefore, ask that the council consider placing on the agenda prior to the invocation, this sentence, "That the city of Lompoke endorses no religious faith, but respects and celebrates the many people of different faiths who reside here. The city council historically begins its sessions with an invocation offered by one of the religious leaders of the community in fully appreciate, in full appreciation of our shared belief that we are one nation under God, and we respect the religious freedom and the freedom of expression of all our citizens to pray as they feel led to pray." Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Petty. Okay, I think it's gonna be a, a long period. Let's, let's try to go through, listen to the comments, and we'll, and, and we'll deal with them, but if we, if, if we applaud after each one, we'll be here after midnight tonight. I'd appreciate your help.
I also agree, agree with Reverend Steve.
Alyssa, could we have your full name, please?
Oh, yeah. Alyssa Owen, and I am representing my school, Law Prisma. And I also agree with Reverend Steve that we should be able to pray to just warm up the opening of the ga—the meeting.
Thank you, Alyssa. Thank you very much. Almost like to break my rule there. Thank you for coming down. Yeah. So, okay, sorry about that.
Good evening. My name is Stan Chang, private citizen, living in, in the city of Lompoke. Uh, it's—it will be evident that, in fact, we seem to have used some of the same resources as I go through this, uh, this litany here. Mayor and city council members, I appreciate the opportunity to address this body with respect to the concern about delivering invocations at the beginning of council meetings. I realize that a change has been proposed in the city council's handbook to define allowable means by which invocations can be delivered. Having read the language in the version that has been, that you just read, uh, I would like to express my observation as a private sys—private citizen concerning this issue. It is stated in the new version that, quote, "The courts have concluded sectarian prayer as part of city council meetings is not permitted under the Constitution. I am not a lawyer, and I have researched the matter to the extent I assume the city staff has done to ensure this council has the appropriate legal foundation to conduct the matter of, of invocations. However, as a non-lawyer, doing internet research, I came across an opinion from a legal foundation, apparently the same as what the Ministerial Association might have come across, regarding invocations at city council or other legislative, legislative meetings, that states, 'Public prayer has been an essential part of our heritage since the time of this nation's founding, and our Constitution has always protected activity. Moreover, such prayer can be direct and sectarian without running afoul of the First Amendment's Estat—Establishment Clause.'" It went further to substantiate that premise with legal jargon, cases among which was Marsh versus Chambers, as was earlier identified. In Marsh, the Supreme Court gave no indication that the mere mention of a sectarian deity or belief would violate the Establishment Clause. The court relied upon and referenced centuries of traditional, and I'm quoting, "of traditional invocations that did mention Jesus as well as other sectarian deities and beliefs." Neither Marsh nor any other Supreme Court case commands removal of all sectarian references from public prayer, particularly where different persons of varying creeds take turns offering the prayer, as has been, uh, proposed. Rather, Marsh and its progeny hold that courts should be concerned with the broader context and circumstances surrounding the prayers. And, uh, in addition, some appellate and district courts that have had occasion apply Marsh have found no trouble with sectarian prayers, so long as they are not exploited and used for proselytizing. The lower courts have rightfully focused on the key guideline provided by Marsh. The content of prayer is not of concern to judges, where, as here, there is no indication that the prayer opportunity has been employed to proselytize, proselytize, or advance anyone, or to disparage any other faith or belief, which was mentioned earlier in another quote. This rendering is different from what the current ver—revision of the city council states as the court's, uh, interpretation. Uh, that revision tends to state a fact that is apparently not accurate from what I could observe. It is indeed ac—it ac—if it is any—if it is indeed inaccurate, I recommend that that statement be revised by merely deleting one word, "not." So because more enabling than restrictive, and so it would be, so it would read, "The courts have concluded sectarian prayer as part of city council meetings is permitted under the Constitution." I respectfully request your consideration of that minor word change. It makes a big difference. The remainder of the paragraph can basically remain the same except for some editing to coincide with the change mentioned. Thank you for your time. By the way, I spoke with a member of the legal foundation I mentioned, and his remark was they are willing to support the city pro bono should a challenge be launched. Thank you.
I'm Elaine Webster, and although I'm a minister, I'm coming as a private citizen also. I've lived here since nineteen sixty-eight. Mayor Zeminski and the Lompoke City Council members, thank you for the privilege of addressing you on the matter of the invocation before city council meetings. First of all, the definition of the word invocation, according to Webster Dictionary, follows, "An appeal to a higher power for aid, a prayer used in invoking, especially at the opening of a service or ceremony. Inspirational words are good, but they are not an invocation. Therefore, if it is, if it is decided to have inspirational words to open the council meeting, please let it be called an inspirational moment or something similar to that; otherwise it will cause confusion. A typical minister of any faith, when asked to give an invocation, will by definition and understanding of the word offer a prayer. I think we all want to avoid confusion, and using the proper words would help alleviate it. On April fifteenth, two thousand and eight, I was privileged to give the invocation at a city council meeting. I opened the prayers I usually do with Father God, proceeded with a prayer for wisdom incorporating several biblical passages on that topic, and ended with the words in Jesus' name. Nothing had been said to me ahead of time, nor was anything mentioned to me afterwards about sectarian issues. In fact, several council members came up to me afterwards and thanked me for the prayer. Thus, it is hard for me to understand why only two years ago there was no issue, and now there seems to be. As far as I can determine, it is a matter of an interpretation of the court's ruling. Other cities, such as Lancaster, California, have invocations, albeit and wisely, with a disclaimer that makes it clear that the city council is not endorsing the beliefs of the one giving the invocation. If there was a vote taken by the people of Lompoke whom you represent, I believe most would vote for an invocation. You have been elected to represent the people of Lompoke and their wishes, not just to do what those currently hired to advise you on various legal matters represent. And with all due respect to you, okay, we did not elect them to represent it to us. We elected you. Certain legal issues are clear, but this issue is not clear. It is a matter of interpretation. I believe you should interpret it as to the will of the people of Lompoke. If Lancaster, with its disclaimer, is not violating the court's ruling with its decision for an invocation, then we can certainly do likewise. Invocations would not be sectarian in the long view if each person prayed according to their beliefs, because invocations would be open for all faiths to express themselves in their own fashion. Thus, over a period of time, no one belief system would be expressed. The Ministerial Association and the Interfaith Alliance represent a significant portion of the community. If we can agree to disagree and have loving toleration for each other's differences, and that includes agnostics and atheists, as we would acknowledge that we are a pluralistic country, then why can't the Lompoke City Council do likewise? Thank you for your attention and time as concerns this issue, issue of invocations at city council meetings.
Thank you, Ms. Webster. I'll ask if, if some of you would start a lineup so that we can keep the speakers moving a little bit, bit quicker. If whoever wants to speak next would, would get in line so that they can move right in.
Darren Hunt, resident of Lompoke. And I believe you received my letter last time, and I know that's referenced here in the agenda, and I just wanted to speak just a moment and just come up here and, uh, to ask you to consider another option for the invocation policy than what's presented here. Uh, you're not alone in the struggle for defining this. Uh, many city councils have, uh, parsed this and, and, uh, defined it and come up with all different options. Uh, you have the option to adapt essentially the same policy here, uh, that has been in place, uh, which is in an effort to, uh, not to violate the Establishment Clause, keep it as a non-sectarian prayer. Uh, while I certainly believe that one of our greatest freedoms in this country is the freedom from state-sponsored religion, I know that having prayers to a generic god is not the only way to accomplish this. The Lompoke Ministerial Association and the Interfaith Alliance, uh, have proposed a statement, which Reverend Steve Petty has read, uh, so I won't bore you with those details again. But it, it would satisfy the requirement that the city not establish a, a, a religion, a preferred religion, if it is coupled with truly reaching out to all of the faiths that are represented in our, in our city and in our country. Uh, I offer that again, as one has been called upon to giving invocations in this chamber in the past, and as I've been invited from the religious community, please allow me the freedom to pray as my religion compels me with the understanding that an invocational prayer should never be used to advance a religion or a specific, uh, belief, or disparage another. Uh, may no one who gives an invocation use this as a personal pulpit. Uh, but since Webster defines invocation as a prayer for help, the invocation should merely be that person calling upon their specific deity, uh, on behalf of themselves for help. You ultimately have the ability to decide however you wish, and I'm praying for you, and I will continue to pray and support our community in whatever— and I will continue to pray and support our community in whatever ways that I can. And just as I close, I know there have been court cases cited as well, and I just cite one that was filed even January 28 of this very year, which, in their ruling, they left a note that concluded, finally, "The court notes that the Court of Appeals for the Fourth Circuit has left open the question of whether other types of legislative prayer may be constitutional, if other elements of diversity and inclusiveness are affirmatively established," noting that "varieties of legislative prayer have been found to be constitutional, where they recognize the rich religious heritage of our country in a fashion that was designed to include members of the community rather than to proselytize." There are precedents out there, however you choose to decide. Thank you.
Thank you, Darren Hunt.
Gibb Hollinger, I live in Vandenberg Village, city council members and mayor. I just want to go on record as being in favor of prayer as an invocation to whatever the person's beliefs are. You know, the intent of invocation is not to win converts to a faith, but to gain guidance from God, and I think we all need that. So I want to go on record as supporting the freedom to pray and invocation however the person's beliefs are.
Thank you, Mr. Hollinger.
Good evening, mayor and council members. I just want to say thank you for serving your community, and I like Lampoke. Oh, I'm Sherri Hollinger, I almost forgot. I live in Vandenberg Village. And I like Lampoke, and I support invoking God in our business meetings. Jesus found me in Lampoke in 1971, and I've called on Him continuously over the years. I participated in a private Christian school for 20 years in Lampoke, and we taught our students the importance of praying for local governments, as God is a God of law and order. In order to lead quiet and peaceful lives, men ought always to pray and not to quit. We pray for our mayor, council members, police officials, fire department, teachers, community servants, pastors, families, citizens. I'm definitely in support of continuing to trust God and show trust in God by acknowledging Him in city business meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hollinger.
Hello, council members. My name is Kevin Sunthomer, and I'm here to support prayer before the meetings take place. I believe that in stifling these prayers and stifling people's beliefs, that doing so would be a great error, just because the Constitution grants us the right to have freedom of religion. And while the council itself does not have to accept what beliefs or what God is being prayed to, to stifle it completely, I think would be a tragic error. I know, being a Christian myself and believing that Jesus is the Son of God and that He died for our sins, knowing what I do about the Christian faith, even God, while He does not force us to serve Him, He still allows us to have the choice. I think if He doesn't take that choice away from us, I can't see why the council should be able to take that choice away from us. I'm, again, in support for prayer. I'm not saying that it should just be to God or, you know, a certain deity, but just whoever is invited to pray, they should be allowed to pray to the deity that they believe in. And for instance, if I was invited to pray, I think I should be allowed to pray to Jesus, just because that's who I believe in, and I've been given that freedom in the Constitution to pray to Him. For someone else who believes in another God, I think they should just be allowed that same opportunity and that same freedom to pray to the God of their choice. I thank you for your time and consideration.
Hi, my name is Gloria Black, and I want to say hello to everybody. I am here to stand for my Lord Jesus Christ. He's my Savior. And I'm an individual, and I believe that I have the freedom and the choice to proclaim my Lord and my Savior anywhere, any stage in life, where I am, and I just want some respect on that. And thank you tonight for listening to me.
Thank you.
How are you doing, council? My name is Dwayne Hicks, and basically, I was sitting back, listening to a lot of this and thinking, and I was thinking, wow, look at the things that we have taken prayer out of and what's happened to a lot of those things. They've all declined in every area. And here, I just believe that our freedom, that a lot of our forefathers died for, a lot of our brothers and sisters died for, was also we had this chance to where we can pray to our God that we believe in. And it'd be a shame to disgrace what they gave their lives for. So we have that freedom. And just ask that you continue to allow any person or spokesperson that wants to pray to pray to the Lord Jesus or any other deity that they believe in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hicks.
Hello, city council. My name is Jay Black. I'm a resident of Mission Hills. Here's my card. The word invoke, when you think about the word invoke, you're asking for a deity, as they're talking about, which you've heard a lot of people say that, to come in and to guide you. Our forefathers, back in the day, inscribed on our dollar bill, "In God we trust." In our National Pledge of Allegiance, "In God we trust." When you go in front of the Supreme Court, they hold the Bible in front, you put your hand on the Bible, and you say, "You follow me, swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, on the Holy Bible." I think it's a shame that people, even if they don't believe in God, it's not, we're not here to enforce religion on anybody. I believe everybody has the right to pray whoever they want. But I think that it's also a violation of our constitutional rights that you should be able to, or even snuff it out, where people can not say who they can or they cannot pray to. I do believe that stating something in front of the city council meeting, such as, you don't endorse whatever, fine, but don't take away our rights. It's absurd. And if you do that, it's like putting a police stake kind of religion on top of us. If an atheist or an agnostic does not want to pray to Jesus, then, okay, but don't let them force their opinion upon me either. Thank you, council.
Hello, my name is Maria Derute, and I am here since 2001, here in Lampoke. I love Lampoke, beautiful city. Thank you, mayor, that you are in charge of everything or part of the city. I am teacher aide, I work in Lampoke Unified School. Did I tell my name? Maria Derute. They call me Carla. I was listening to everybody about the faith, about how to pray or how not to pray. I think that this country is beautiful because they allow to be freedom and respect what everybody wants to do, and I am agreed that continue, because like the other people or the other sisters that were talking about, pray, you know? It's beautiful, because we pray, and I support that continue doing that in the name of Jesus and in God trust. I saw that sign outside, "We trust in God." And I'm here to this country, I came from Peru, I am citizen of this country now. I am living here, this city, that I love it, all this Lampoke, and thank you for to listen us continue.
Mayor, city council. My name is Leonard Akronowitz, and I am a resident of Lampoke. I want to commend you, as a group and in general, for taking on this subject matter. I think it's very important, and it's something that is finding itself in almost every agency, public agencies, schools across the country, and it's being questioned. I couldn't begin to quote constitutional law, as some of these other people have done, and done some research, but I think I have read enough about these various cases to know that there are shades of meaning in all of them. I couldn't begin to judge what side that I would come down on. I have been asked in the past to give invocations here to the council and the public, and I've been extremely careful about being non-denominational and general in everything that I've said. I found that myself sitting in the audience on occasion, and sitting at home and watching television, extremely uncomfortable, because when the invocation was given by other people, they represented their faith community, and I felt that I was being left out. I certainly hope that I didn't do that in my presentations in the past. I think that, to begin with, there has been coverage in the newspapers and other places of Reverend Petty's previous general statement and other things about this. I had some exception with what I read, but that's not the approach that our city attorney is taking. I can tell you, as I read the statement now in the council handbook, that it seems to be the absolute limit of what is acceptable or not acceptable under the circumstances. So I won't be, at this point, saying that I endorse it or don't endorse it, but I would suggest to you that we're not in the position today, even with that statement, that you should not be in the position today with that statement to make a judgment and vote on this question. And now that the statement is read and available, and I must tell you, it took me a little time to find it, I had to get on the Internet and dig deeply through it to find that statement today. I would suggest to you that this question be reviewed with the faith community and with a legal approach, and put off from today to a future meeting, and some judgments and recommendations made then. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Akronowitz.
My name is Maria Santimer, and I am a volunteer for the city of Lampoke in the convalescent You know, I thank for the freedom that this nation has provided to do many things for the city of Lampoke. As I go in the convalescent home, and if they didn't give me the freedom to pray for those that, I ask them, "Will you allow me to pray?" And their response is yes or no, or, you know? And I accept their decision, but the opportunity to have led many people there to have peace in their soul, I really wonder why we want to take God out of our nation when it's so important. And I wish you to really rethink this, to limit us. I personally believe this is a benefit to all people to have a belief in something. And I also have experienced other people praying in other names, or, you know, tell their mind what they believe, what they are for, and as I respect my freedom, I respect their freedom, and I only am requesting to ask to be accepted and, as, like I say, a citizen of the United States of America, to be able to conform to my freedom in this nation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Maria. Is there anyone else?
Rob Key, citizen of Lampoke, about 20 months now. And I would just like to, first of all, thank the council so much for bringing this up so quickly. I know it's been almost three months to the day, November 17, when I came and asked the question of clarity for this particular topic, because for the amount of time that I've been here, which is a short period of time, every time that I would come to a council meeting and watch the invocation or see it addressed, it was always in contradiction to what the handbook said, but yet it was tolerated, and the clarity was what I was requesting. And I just, first of all, I thank you so much for being open enough and bold enough to put this out on the table. I would like to ask you to please consider not actually voting on this maybe tonight, only because you've heard a lot of opinions, a lot of thoughts, a lot of people's hearts, and I think there's a couple of more that are coming from both sides of this story. And it's never about forcing any one person to pray to a particular deity. America is about freedom of religion, not freedom from religion, whether it's praying to a deity or choosing not to pray at all, whether it's a faith that you can identify or a faith in something you can't identify. And the city of Lampoke has a rich heritage of believing in God and of exercising faith. Part of the development of this city was for that reason. Pastor Steve shared that he's in the oldest church in the city. What a great heritage to think that this city was established with the first thing in mind is to get a church established so that someone would be able to exercise or have a particular faith. With the country and the state that it is currently in, as we all know, it's a sad place. Lampoke, by God's grace, has been able to escape, and by God's grace and good leadership in this council, has been able to escape a lot of the major economic catastrophes that we have seen just over the past couple of years, even the past year and a half. And so with that in mind, I would like to challenge the council to be bold enough to set precedent and say that we will not rob our community members from the freedom to stand on the faith in which they believe, and we will exercise the right to celebrate that faith with them, regardless if it's the faith of your choosing. We should have the opportunity to hold on to hope and to be able to grasp that which has carried us through. For me personally, it is my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, and that is my passion because of His passion for me. And we do pray for all of you, and we thank you for your leadership to this community. And God bless you in the decision that you have to make.
Thank you. Again, if there are others that want to speak, we can speed this up a little bit if you will get in line. Stand up.
Sorry about that. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members. Matthew Hughes, I'm a homeowner in Lampoke, but I do reside in the village. Let us pray. Our Father in Heaven, we are so thankful to Thee that we live in this free land, where we can worship according to the dictates of our own conscience. Bless the city council this night as they deliberate on this most important issue, and we ask it in the holy name of Thine. we ask it in the holy name of thy Son, Jesus Christ. My mic was left on throughout that prayer. It was sectarian, it was denominational, and it was as sincere as I could make it. I have that freedom, this country gives me the freedom to pray as I wish here at the podium in a city council meeting during public comment. I can pray at home, I can pray at church, I can pray in the foyer, on the public square, in the streets. We are so blessed to live in this land. The recommendation, I want to commend the city staff and the city attorney for their work in addressing this issue. I think the solution that they've proposed strikes an appropriate balance between the law and the desires of the people of faith in this community that I respect. So I thank them for that, and I encourage you to accept the city council handbook as it's before you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Seeing no one, we'll close oral communication, bring it back to the council. I'd like to, before I open it up for other council members, I'd like to use the prerogative of the chair and give my own views first this time instead of waiting last. And I'm not even sure where I want to start on this, but the, we're not proposing to restrict any personal freedoms, as Mr. Hughes pointed out, and our policy states that you can pray if it's related to city business at any time you speak during the council meeting, except at the beginning of the meeting where it's not a personal view. You're on the agenda, there's one person on the agenda, recognized as the person leading the invocation for the entire council, for the entire city. That is, makes it a public role, and I see it as that. A number of the people that came up and commented quoted from one attorney or from another or from one legal brief or another legal brief, and I've never been in a courtroom where there weren't attorneys on both sides. If it's a civil court, or if it's a criminal court, or if it's on TV, there's always attorneys for both sides trying to make an argument. We interviewed a number of people, we selected an individual to be the city attorney to give us advice on matters pertaining to the conduct of the city government, and I haven't heard anything that would cause me to want to ignore the advice that we were given. When I was sworn in as mayor after I was appointed, I raised my hand and I swore to uphold the Constitution. I didn't keep my fingers crossed. I didn't say I reserve the right to pick and choose which laws. I swore as I'm advised by attorneys, and this is why we've hired a man here to give us the advice, and I have to respect the words that have been proposed for the handbook. I understand, believe me, I understand how difficult that limitation might be for someone who is a Christian, is a strong believer, who acknowledges his full dependence on Christ and his religion. It must be, it's very hard for me to take this action right now. And one of the people stood up, Mr. Hunt, and said that his belief compels him to pray on behalf of his God. And there were some other comments that are related to what I'm about to say, but one of the most beautiful prayers, and it's what I say every night as I climb into bed, is, was given to us by Christ, doesn't mention the name of Christ. "Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name." It asks forgiveness for our sins and for our Father to not lead us into temptation, to deliver us from evil. It asks for our daily bread, and it stops there. And this is the one that Christ gave us to pray, and it's one of the most beautiful of prayers to me. It doesn't say I have to pray in His name, it doesn't say I have to try to preach any type of or comment on any sectarian manner. I believe that prayer could be said by the people of the Jewish faith, by the people of Hindu, by the people of Muslim, by any other religion because of what it's asking. And for that reason, and I did listen to the words that were spoken today. For that reason, I'm ready to support the words and put them in the handbook. It's been asked that we study this a little bit longer. We're going to be here and probably not deal with the entire agenda tonight. We have some other business to deal with, and we spent a lot of time on this. And tonight, I would hope to, if the council can get it resolved. I won't make a motion now, I'll ask each of the other council members to give their views, and then we'll see if we can find a solution up here. Who else would like to speak? Mr. Lingle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With all due respect to our city attorney, I know we hired him to do what he feels is right. In all of my years of study of management and leadership, I kept coming across a phrase, and it read, "Managers do things right. Leaders do the right thing." We are leaders, we're supposed to be leaders, and I think it's important that we do the right thing. The city attorney is trying to make sure that we do things right, keep us out of trouble, but I believe doing the right thing is to abide by what we've heard here tonight, and we represent the city of Lompoc. There was, I believe, two of the speakers that spoke in favor of the proposal by our city attorney. I'm hoping that we will look at the proposal by the ministerial association in the letter by Pastor Hunt. We do have a tough job here to do tonight, but I would, I'd like to hope that we can get beyond just what a few of the people of this community think we want. The proposal by Pastor Hunt, it does make, it does try to put forward the belief that we are going to be, our invocations are going to be non-sectarian. As a matter of fact, Reverend Petty pointed out that we should bend over backwards to make sure it is, and I propose that when we do adopt the proposal by Pastor Hunt, which I hope we do, that we as a city make sure that we make it a point to invite people of non-Christian beliefs to come to this podium and give them invocation. That's what I'm going to be hoping we accomplish tonight. Thank you.
I don't think it's any secret to the city of Lompoc how I feel about God and country. My problem with this whole thing is, is it going to stop with this, or is it going to stop with the American flag, the California flag? Where is it going to stop? When are we as a people going to be the people of the United States instead of the followers of the United States? I've been raised with high morals from youth to now. I mean, I'm learning today how to become a better Christian. It's difficult for me to sit and think that we're squandering and talking about constitutional rights when our Constitution says we have this right. I understand our city attorney, and I agree with him wholeheartedly, because some idiot in the courts said that that's the way it shall be. Well, I wasn't there, I wasn't able to vote for it. So I, what I would like to see, I've got several notes here, but I'm not going to go into it because it is going to be a long night yet, but what I would like to see is for this council to set back any decisions that we're going to make until after the meeting tomorrow, the 17th. It's going to be held at the Peace Lutheran Church at 11:30. I suggest that we bring this back at the next council meeting and make our decision. We've heard 17 people tonight, actually, I'm sorry, 16. And Mr. Hughes, you floored me. To hear those words come out of your mouth made my heart warm. So I would like for this council to set back, I know you think it's a waste of time, Mayor, but I'm sorry, I don't.
Thank you, Mr. Durham. Ms. Rouge.
I have listened to you all, I thank you for your, all your thoughts and comments. I know we need all the help we can get up here, and right now especially we do. As Ms. Councilmember Durham said, there have been 16 speakers here. We represent 44,000 people, and I'm not that sold on all 44,000 people agree with the 15 people here. We're a very diverse community, and I think we should take that all into consideration. I agree with the mayor on this issue. I think the statement in here suffices on what we need to do about an invocation, and I'm ready to vote on it tonight. I think to continue this, we would just have a repeat of, you know, what's going on now. I do appreciate you all coming out to give us your opinions, but I think postponing this decision would not change anything at this point in time. I would ask that this statement, when we send out a letter to whoever's going to be in the rotation list, that this statement be on each and every letter, that the city clerk put that on, that this is, you know, what we agreed on. I don't know if we will agree on this tonight or not, but I think that would be good. And I also would like to see other denominations or other people from our diverse community given an invocation, and the word says, you know, what is it, inspiring words? Well, your inspiring words, you know, are the prayer that you want to give. Those are inspiring. And over the last three and a half years, the invocations that have come along have been very inspiring to me personally. So I think the statement suffices and will be what we need to do in this handbook and to follow the law.
Ms. Marner.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank the public for giving us their views and their opinions, and listening to what I've heard, reading both of the statements, it's all a question of interpretation, and I was surprised by particularly one of the statements in which it was said that the invocation that is being proposed is a stifling prayer. I don't read it as that. I don't see that the invocation that is being proposed here in this language is stifling anybody's prayer. So I would ask the public to read it again, to understand that we, I, as a council member, I swear an oath that I was going to abide by the Constitution of the United States. I will not break the law. That is my number one, most guidance that I need, is I will not break the law of the United States, I will have to abide by the Constitution. Now, I am not an expert in interpreting the Constitution, so at one point in time when I find myself not being the expert, I have to rely on the word of the experts to tell me how the Constitution is being interpreted. And at this point in time here today, the expert is our legal counsel, so I will have to go with what the legal counsel advises me and vote that way. So I will also concur with Mayor Zaminsky and Councilmember Rouge that it's time to make this decision and be done with. Thank you.
It's kind of obvious since we've all given our views. I said it's pretty much obvious since we've all given our views how a motion or a vote would go. I'm going to suggest that we move on to the rest of the, we've given our views, we move on to the rest of the, well, no, let's make it official. I'll move that we adopt the policy in the draft handbook C123 on invocation, page 46, as the policy of the Lompoc City Council.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second, and let's vote for that one, and then we'll go.
Mr. Mayor, can we have discussion?
You want to speak against?
Well, I think we're entitled to discussion before we vote. I'm not going to be voting in favor of this proposal. What I would like to do is have the council consider something else, and that would be that we have prior, we start, we agendize our city council meeting starting at 7:05 We do not allow or we do not have invocations during our council meetings, which would make it legal. We would not, according to the Constitution, if we want to go along with our city attorney, which I know you are leading us in the right path, we would not have an invocation at our city council meetings. We'd start the meeting at 7:05. At 7 o'clock, we may have a minister, a pastor, a priest, a rabbi come up to the podium and give an invocation of their choosing. After that invocation, Mr. Mayor, you would start the meeting, we'd immediately stand and do the pledge of allegiance, and we'd go on with our meeting at that point. This would, I believe, abide by the Constitution. We would not be having any type of prayer during a city council meeting. Is that correct, Mr. Penoni?
If I may, through the mayor, if I understand what you are suggesting, if the agenda is posted as a 7:05 o'clock agenda, and we aren't starting the tapes and the cameras and the mayor isn't hitting the gavel, but we happen to be here at 7 o'clock, those that are and those that aren't, aren't here at 7 o'clock, I don't think that would be considered the city taking part in having someone say a prayer, if they wanted to say a prayer or not. The only difficulty would be is how it is you're going to communicate that to the public, and with that communication, if I were one who wanted to challenge that, and I'm not suggesting that I would, I'm just saying if I was, if I was one who wanted to challenge that, I would put the facts together to show that it was something that the city was really doing is advocating that invocation. So all I can tell you is, it's better to do it that way than have it on the agenda, but I can't say for sure that the courts would allow that to happen the way you're suggesting.
Okay. My suggestion would be, we don't try to promote it. If it happens, it happens. You know, we just happened to show up here, someone is at the podium, and if I want to stand and bow my head during that time, that's fine. If someone's in the audience they want to leave, or if they're not in the audience. If someone's in the audience, they want to leave, or if they're not in the audience. But we do not promote that we're going to have a invocation prior, at 7 o'clock, prior to the 7:05 meeting. If it happens, it happens. We will not promote it. We'll let that up to the will of God. Thank you.
Mayor. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Marner.
I have a question for Mr. Councilmember Lingal. Are you proposing to remove the invocation out of the council meeting?
I am.
Bob, that sounds good. However, what if two or three or four people came in here and took the podium? Is the chair expected to say, hey, only one of you? And that legitimizes the person? What if there's a group of people all talking? Is the chair expected to say, can we be silenced so we can hear the individual up here? If there's any action taken up here, it, whether it's before or after the, the item, it becomes a, it becomes an agenda item. Larry Lavignino has told me that that's the way he does it in Santa Maria. I'm well acquainted with a good friend of a mayor in a central California city that has recently gone through this. And he moved the prayer to before the wrapping of the gavel, that's still listed, as a way. And, and he said that that's never been challenged, so for now, that's the way he'll do it. But he's privately told me that his attorney has told him that it won't sustain, it won't stand a challenge any, any more than if it's after the wrapping of the gavel. And I've been told by several mayors that have taken it off the, that have tried to go beyond this, that if there was any lawsuit filed, they would immediately do away with all prayer rather than spend the resources in their city. It, it will be expensive if a lawsuit is filed. Whether we think it's ridiculous or not, it will be expensive. And we don't have that kind of latitude. We don't have those kind of funds. It's nice that somebody will step forward pro bono, but it's going to disrupt and take. And I'm afraid that it will result, personally, I'm afraid it will result ultimately in no prayer. Right now, right now, we do have the opportunity to pray. Right now, we do have the motto that was in the mid-'50s approved by our federal government as the official motto of the United, the United States government, "In God We Trust." And it's only been within the last 60 years that, that, that tradition has been upheld. But I would, I would not vote for, I, I don't want to plow new ground right now. I'm, I'm sorry. We're here to do, to do other things. And I, I think it would be a disruption that would ultimately remove the, the, the whole concept of prayer from, from the council meeting. And I'm, and I'm not willing to risk that. So I couldn't support your motion. Mr. Durham.
You know, there's a lot of talk, and you mentioned that, Mr. Mayor, that you've, you received numerous emails throughout the nation on the negatives of prayer. But yet, I've only had one citizen in the city of Lompoc that has said anything negative about prayer. As far as our authority, if this group of people come in the next council meeting at 10 minutes till 7:00 and sit down, and somebody decides to stand up and pray, by God, I hope they bow their head and pray. When you walk in and you hit that gavel, the meeting then begins. And that's when we, as a city, have to act, as the courts have said. You can't tell a group of people that they can't pray to whoever they want to pray to, whether they want to pray or not. So maybe in a roundabout way, maybe the people of Lompoc should look at it that way. Show up 10 minutes early and give your honor to God.
Mr. Mayor, I call for the question.
Thank you. The call for the question is a, is a rule, is a motion to suspend debate and takes a fourth, fifth vote. So do we want to, do we want to put that question, or Mr. Lingal, let him have one more minute, and then we'll call for the question. Go ahead, Bob.
Okay. I was just going to comment, I was just going to comment on Mr. Durham, that, his comment that, yes, when you hit the gavel, that is when the meeting starts. And if there's three people standing up there, I'd expect the other three people to sit down. So, thank you.
Do we have a motion on the floor? We do have. And let's, let's vote on the motion on the floor.
Mr. Mayor, for the public record, can we repeat the motion?
The motion was to approve the policy that was presented to us in draft form regarding the, regarding invocation, as on page 46 of the draft. That motion passes three to two. Now, with that, we'll move on to the rest of the handbook. We were given some 40 pages of rewritten handbook, which lists our parliamentary procedure, which lists our other policies. Let me take, take a minute of silence to let those that want to leave. Okay. At this, at this point in time, I'll ask, we've all received this handbook, the handbook, the, the draft has been on the webpages for, for public comment. Are there any comments, Ms. Marzalona or Mr. Penoni, other than just to ask if we want to go through it?
Before you do, there were a couple of comments that Councilmember Rouge gave me that I think should be noted for the record, just so that you know that there's a couple of changes that I would recommend based on the comments that I received. The changes are, there, the policy regarding professional participation and regarding council vacancies, it appears in both, in two places in the book. So I'm just going to merge those two, so it'll only one place.
Okay.
And then there was a misspelling of the college Allen. There's supposed to be two Ls, and there was only one L.
Oh, okay, good. I think that the participation in professional should be a policy. Okay.
It would be a policy, it's just going to be merged into one and stuck in one place. Not, it, right now, it appears in two places in the handbook. We're going to put it together and put it in only one place. Same thing with the vacancies, council vacancies.
Are there any, let me start on, on my right. Mr. Lingal, you have any other comments on the, on the handbook before us?
Yes. On page 23, B3.2, it appears according to this that the council will no longer be electing a mayor pro tem, but it'll be the mayor selecting a mayor pro tem. I was wondering why we have changed that. In the past, it's been the council electing a mayor pro tem. And according to this, it says that regularly scheduled meeting soon after the general municipal election, the mayor shall choose council members as mayor pro tem. And I'm just, I was wondering why that change came in there.
I didn't catch that one. Mr. Penoni, have you got a comment on that?
I think it's an error. The intent wasn't to have the, the intent was to have the council still appoint a mayor pro tem. So I apologize for that.
Okay. So we can make that change back to council to select a mayor pro tem.
Yes.
Okay. Well, I have plenty of notes on invocation, but I'll hold those, I guess. Those are my.
Thank you. Ms. Rouge.
The first one is, my name's not spelled right on the front page. And it's not even Rouge, it's just Ann. And pro tem isn't, pro tem isn't, it's pre-tem. Anyway, just nitpicky things. And then also, which I forgot to mention to you, on page two, the second paragraph, there's a, a sentence that doesn't make much sense, sense to me. The first sentence, if you, if you read it, it, there's this phrase that says, "In accordance with provided by law." And I don't know what should be added or taken out of that phrase.
I think the provided by could be deleted.
Excuse me?
If we deleted the provided by, I think that would.
Oh, in accordance? In accordance with law? Okay. Thank you. That was all I had, besides the other stuff I say.
Hey, Ms. Marner.
I'd like to comment on an email that I got from Mr. Fink regarding the, the council book. And one of his comments was regarding filling council vacancies, that he felt that we are not really changing anything after going through the experience with nominating the mayor. And what we went through, we really didn't incorporate any, any lessons from that experience. And my understanding is that we have no choice, that we have to leave this open, because it is, again, a California law. So if we go and try to put any differences and more, you know, barriers, if you wish, in how we nominate a vacancy, it will basically be violating the California law code. So I think it has to stay as it is. Even though it might be a very painful process and arbitrary process to go through, but that's the way it is.
Thank you, Ms. Marner. Mr. Lingal.
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Marner, because I had that one marked as well. I was going to recommend that we end the sentence at the end of vacancy. Would read, instead of having, without submitting an application, it would, I think we'd accomplish the same thing. It would read, "The procedure for filling council vacancies is contained in the California law. All council members shall be automatically eligible to fill such vacancy." Period. That was going to be my recommendation on that. That leaves it up to the current council if they want to choose to have applications or not, but their, council members are automatically eligible. I think it goes to stand that they would not have to fill in application anyway.
I, I think it would work. I think it's, someone could be eligible to file the application, which is why I thought leaving in the, without submitting an application would be more clear that someone would never have, a councilman would never have to submit the application. But it, it could work if we leave out that phrase.
I'd like to see that.
I, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Let me, we've done, oh, Mr. Penoni.
No, I just.
What, you refer to the appendix, and what is in, going to be in the appendixes? Appendix?
There's, there's several ordinances and resolutions.
Because in there, and you talk about the Brown Act is going to be in the appendix also.
Correct.
And then the ordinances and so on, does that have to do with the salaries and all that?
Correct.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
Okay, we'll, we'll open it for any public comment at this time. Are there any comments from the public on the draft policy handbook that's before us? Seeing no one rise, we'll close that one. We'll ask then, what are the wishes of the council?
I move we accept the changes to the council with the aforementioned corrections and changes.
I second.
Seconded? Let's vote. Moving on, the next item is the Hancock Bike Path Extension. Kevin?
Well, good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members, and the public. Tonight, I'm going to talk to you about a project that was conceived almost 15 years ago while planning for the new Allen Hancock College Lompoc Valley Center. 1994, the council identified a problem with a potential access problem for the location of the college. There's a lack of safe pedestrian and bicycle access to, in general, to the Y area, and more specifically to the college from the city. As you know, the, the only north-south access out of town across the river is Highway One, H Street. That is a state highway, high, high-speed, 55 mile an hour and above that. And it really was not designed with any pedestrian facilities, per se. There's just a narrow shoulder for vehicle parking, but really not intended to be heavy use for pedestrians or bicyclists. So they looked at a possible solution to this and determined that a separate bike path, a dedicated bike path from Central and H to the Lompoc Valley Center is needed. This would be a, what's called a Class 1 bike path, separated from any, any vehicle use with its own dedicated facility. City went to work to realize this dream and leveraged some funds, Measure D funds, and also secured measure, or federal grants to build the first, what would be the first phase of the project. And we called it the San Ynez River Bike Bridge and completed that project in 2002. That solved a major, first major problem with access. The bridge, the existing bridge across H Street is very narrow. If the shoulders on H Street were, were unsafe, the bridge is even more unsafe because there's all like one-foot shoulders or two-foot shoulders. So the city built a cantilevered Class 1 bike path off the existing bridge, providing access across the river, north and south. But it did leave a problem where it ends, north of the, the bridge, bicyclists and pedestrians are again forced to use what's, what's available, which are the existing shoulders along H Street. Which brings us to the project tonight. This project would continue this bike path north all the way to the, to the Allen Hancock College. It would be one mile of Class 1 bike path, beginning 800 foot north of the San Ynez River Bridge. And, I can get my little laser pointer here. So what we're trying to show you here is it would start, start here north of the bridge. It would then go on to the Federal Bureau of Prison property in a dedicated easement and continue on up, up to Allen Hancock College. So it'd kind of come in the back way to the college. The, you'd have several safety amenities, fencing on both sides of the, of the bike path as it crosses the prison property, and would also have safety lighting for use at dusk when the college is open and classes are still in session. It has a preliminary estimate of $1.8 million, although we hope to lower the cost as we move into the final design. Tonight, we're just talking about approving the environmental document and moving forward with design. Funding will be provided by federal transportation enhancement grants and Measure D. The grants were a competitive program administered by Caltrans, and the city of Lompoc was lucky enough to secure two different grants that are earmarked specifically to enhance the transportation. transportation system of cities. So the, the project is fully funded. An environmental evaluation has been conducted by city staff pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA, and a mitigated negative declaration is prepared for your approval. Stacy Lawson, our senior environmental coordinator, is available tonight to answer any questions you have regarding the environmental evaluation. In conclusion, I recommend you approve the project tonight, certify the mitigated negative declaration, and direct us to complete final design of the project. And we're both available for comments, Stacy or I.
Thank you, Mr. McKeon. Any questions from council at this time? Mr. Lingle?
Mr. McKeon, define Class One Bike Path.
Sure. Class, there's three different times, classes of bike path. The lowest level would be Class Three, which would be an unmarked bike path adjacent to existing road, on the shoulder of an existing road. So there's enough room to ride your bike, but there isn't any delineated line, there isn't any place to, there's no signs that dedicate that. Class Two has a dedicated line on the, on the road, a separated place for people to ride. A Class One is actually, you take that bike path and you remove it from the roadway, and you, it has its own area, separated from the road. There's no interaction between vehicles and the pedestrians and the bike, and the bicyclists. Similar to what we have along the river, San Ynez River, that's a Class One Bike Path. Sure.
Any other questions or comments? We'll open this up for public comment. Is anyone in the public who would like to speak to this at this time? Seeing no one rise, we'll bring you back to council. Mr. Lingle?
I move we accept staff recommendations for the Allen Hancock Bike Path.
I second that motion.
All right, any other comments? Let's vote on the item before us. And that passes. The next item.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of City Council. I'm here this evening to present the 2010-2011 proposed budgets for the Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG, Human Services, and Home Investment Partnership Home Programs. I did want to point out very briefly that there were three minor typos in your staff report. Just real quick, let's see, one has to do on page three, toward the end of the page, second bullet, second sentence, "To better prepare job seekers and attract new businesses to Lompoc." The second typo is on page six. That number was revised. That number should read 1,970,000, and that would slightly revise the attachment 4.4. So I just revised that. That's the first sentence under Housing Nonprofit. And then the third change is on page seven, second sentence of the paragraph, "Human Services Program," and it should read December 2009. Every year, the city's CDBG program prepares a budget for submission to the county for inclusion in the CDBG Urban County Partnership Budget Document that is submitted to HUD in May of each year. This year, in addition to the annual budget, HUD requires communities to prepare a five-year plan of goals and objectives for the use of CDBG and home federal grant funds. The CDBG Home Strategic Plan is shown in Attachment One of the staff report. Page three of the staff report summarizes major accomplishments last year, including acquisition of a site for a new senior community center, environmental cleanup of a city-owned site in a residential area, administration of a housing rehabilitation loan program, operation of code enforcement in the low and moderate income census tracts, and allocation of funds to nonprofit organizations, and staff support to the city's Human Services Commission. Proposed highlights for fiscal year 2010-2011 include increasing code enforcement efforts in order to reduce slum and blighting conditions in the community, new initiatives in the city's ongoing economic development efforts, which are designed to the greatest extent possible to create jobs, better prepare job seekers, and attract new businesses to Lompoc, and continue the city's programs in housing rehabilitation, human services, and public facility restoration and development. Staff is recommending that council consider making available up to $1.5 million in CDBG program income for the development of the proposed new senior community center. Staff is making this recommendation because of two issues. One is that the city currently has excess CDBG program income. Excess program income must be spent prior to the city drawing down any new federal CDBG funds. Second, staff has become aware of a potential $1.5 million gap between construction cost estimates for the new community center and funds that will be generated by a redevelopment agency bond. Council can choose to use excess CDBG program income on the new community center or other CDBG-eligible uses. Given the one-time nature of this large amount of funds, staff recommends that council consider using the majority of these funds for a capital project. Should council defer decision on the use of this excess program income, CDBG regulations require that the city use CDBG program income exclusively prior to drawing down new CDBG entitlement funds. The proposed CDBG Human Services Budget for fiscal year 2010-2011 will use approximately $893,000 in program income by not drawing down on additional CDBG entitlement funds. This will help bring the CDBG program income fund balance to a level in compliance with HUD regulations. And with that, I conclude my presentation, and I can answer any questions.
Ms. Martner? Give me.
I had a meeting with Ms. Barcelona, Ms. Dynalog Heart, and Arlene, Ms. Pelzer, regarding this agenda item. I have raised many concerns over the past on the fact that we don't spend our money. And we earmarks these projects, and they sit there, and they just don't get spent, and we're really, the community is not really favoring, is not benefiting from any of these monies. So I understand the concern, and I totally agree with the fact that the monies need to be spent. And the monies need to be spent in a way that actually they realize projects. Now, I want to focus my comments on the public facilities, which is page six and seven. And after all the discussions that I had with the staff, I have to say that I, I am just not happy with the process by which we arrived at this. As a council member here, I like to make my decisions with all the information that I can have on hand. I understand that the city's staff at this time cannot give me answers to many of the questions that I have, and I'm not going to go into the details of what those questions were. But they have to do with why the community center is, has half a million dollars of additional monies that are needed, that will come later, at a later time at the council. I also have difficulty seeing how the monies are being reallocated to projects. We have one, two, three, four, five projects, the Lompoc Theater renovation, Ryan Park restroom remodel, PAL Recreation Center, Charlotte's Web, and Lompoc Hospital Conversion Funds. I am somewhat familiar with these projects, and I don't think there is anybody here in this room that knows the details about every single one of these projects. I don't really know whether PAL has a plan for the recreation center. I know that they wanted to demolish the, the swimming pool over here. I learned that that's going to cost half a million dollars just to even do that. What are the organizations that are helping on the project? However, we have $99,000 that we're going to keep there. So I don't see much of the logic as to how these monies are being refunded, they're being relocated to go to a need, the need of the community center. I understand the need of the community center, even though I don't have all the details. It's a high-priority project for me as a council member. I think it needs to happen. It's shovel-ready, we need to make it happen. But how and what logic the staff used to relocate those monies, I just don't understand it. And, you know, I have a lot of hesitation in, in just saying, well, let's take the money out of, let's take the money out of, you know, Charlotte's Web, 113,000, let's take some money out of Lompoc Theater, and leave 113,000 there, and just kind of reshuffle these monies. If I were to look at all of these projects, I would say there is, you know, without knowing the details, I would say there is only one of them that probably is realizable, and that's the restroom restoration in Ryan Park. Why don't we put all the money there and make that happen? So, so, so what is the logic on doing this?
And my response to that would be, that's why this is a proposed budget for council consideration. There was a need to identify another half million dollars from the CDBG fund to close the potential gap between revenues and expenditures. All of these projects had been identified by prior councils as priority projects. Councilperson Martner, you are correct that out of all the projects identified here, the closest one that could be realized in the near future would be the Ryan Park restroom project. One, because it can be done for probably several hundred thousand dollars, as opposed to the other projects, which are probably closer to a couple of million dollars. And second, because the Ryan Park restroom project is a project within the city's control. It is a project, it's a property we own, we can certainly oversee the construction of that project, whereas in the other projects identified, they involve other parties, other nonprofit groups, that need to bring other funds to the table. And up to this point, those other entities have been, they've, they have tried, and they continue to try to bring funds, but those were partnership projects where the city was partnering with other outside entities. So I agree with your observation, so we can certainly do that.
And, thank you. Furthermore, if there are other partners in the other projects, at least in my, in my world, if I, I am going to go and invest monies or lend monies to a certain project, I'd like to know who the other players are, I would like to know what the risk associated with that investment are. And at this point in time, this report does not give any of that information. And I, and I know that, that you don't have the information either, that it will take time, and we'll have to come back, and we'll have to go and ask each one of those organizations to give us an update on their projects. Where are they? Who are their partnered, partners? What's their plan of completion? What's their risk of completion? So, you know, how can we make a decision of allocating monies without really knowing what the money's being allocated for, and what is the chance of success of what's happening? So, you know, I'd like to see something happen with these monies, I'd like to see the money go to the community center, but I also like to see something happen, and one of the realizable things is the Ryan Park restroom remodel.
Thank you. Any questions this time? You can be up.
Ms. Lockhart, correct me if I'm wrong, but we are not actu, we're not removing money from these other projects. I mean, we're temporarily removing, but is our intention, you know, it is our intention to refund these projects with that amount of money sometime in the future. Is that correct?
That could be done. That could be done.
Could be, but it's not the intent of this proposal tonight.
Not at this time. I'm simply bringing back for council's consideration projects that had been previously, previously identified by prior councils. We currently are in an unusual situation, because the city received a repayment on a CDBG purchased property. That came last August. So this is unusual, because we have a large amount of money that have come back to the city. Normally, the city's CDBG grant is about a half million dollars a year. So we're dealing with an unusual situation where we have additional monies at this time. But as I indicated, we have a budget right now that because of the proposed budget, we can utilize all program income at this time, and it would bring the city down to a point where we would be back under HUD compliance.
Okay, so if we do not reprogram this money, we're at risk of losing it?
No, we're not at risk of losing it. We're not at risk of losing it, because I would now be required to use all program income toward just general operating expenses.
I see, okay.
So I, I would work at realigning the budget, so we would not lose the monies. We don't have to put any additional money toward the community center project at all at this time. The city can defer making a decision on that. But it is a, it is a situation where HUD does require we spend the monies, the monies we have, until we can draw that down to a point before we can draw additional money.
Tony, go ahead.
Did I understand you to say that if we don't spend the money on your proposal that prior council has brought to, it would be reallocated to the general fund?
No, no, no.
Okay, thank you. That's good enough.
Does the money that we get from CDBG have, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, have retained its fiscal year designation? When you talk about we have past funds, are some of them 2004 funds, 2005 funds, 2006 funds? Or are they all just prior-year funds?
They are all prior-year funds, and when you think about the money that went into the old community center, that was back around 2000 or so. So, yeah, it is older money, and of course, HUD always requires that you spend older money first, program income first, makes sense. You always take, you use the money you have before you get new money.
With the older money, and the, the large amount of older money that we, that we received yes, last year from the sale of the community center, we are in a situation where we kind of stand out as having a lot of prior-year money that is not spent. Yeah, I'd, I'd like to know more about the status of each of the projects, but I don't want to hold up a budget, and I don't want to submit a, a budget. There is one thing in your, in your report that I'll go to right off the bat. Recommendations in paragraph two. You said direct that up to $1.5 million in CDBG program income be used for the construction. I'd, I'd rather see that, say, be reserved for the construction and not used, because right now, we are not, we haven't approved that facility. We haven't approved, awarded the contract. This is merely putting funds into, into, into certain accounts and holding them for things that will, every one of these would come back to us, probably several times before they would get underway.
And I understand your, your concern in wanting to save and hold money. My only concern is that you can only do that for so long. And I don't want to get too complicated with the situation, but as we use the existing money, that means we won't draw new money. And that's fine, it'll kind of sit there and begin to accumulate. Over a period of time, that creates another problem, and HUD does look at certain ratios of expenditure as well. So at some point, you do need to kind of make a decision. And I'm certainly willing to work with council, you don't have to make a decision tonight. In fact, that's why I'm not recommending any other consideration of any other capital development projects. We had quite a few come in this year. We had a request from the California Space Authority... We had a request from the California Space Authority. We had a request from the Lompoc Firefighters Association. So all of those requests are just sort of sitting, but because we had an existing project in the pipeline, which already has a lot of momentum behind it, it was my understanding that that could be a use of CDBG funds, because CDBG funds were used initially in the acquisition of the site.
Now, I, I just, with my comment on the recommendation on the front page, I wouldn't want anybody to interpret that as that we have approved the, the construction of that, of that community center, because that's still, still a long way before we're, we're doing that. And that, that's why I suggest that they be, be reserved or, or, or whatever, rather than, than.
Okay.
I may be splitting, splitting hair on that one. Let me take one more comment here, and then we'll, for, for public.
So I, I want to clarify one more time. If we don't spend the monies, they're going to sit there. But that adds a risk of further monies coming down the pike, because HUD allocates monies, I don't know, in a yearly basis or whatever. So, so if we don't spend money, we're not going to get more. The bottom line. Is that an easy way to explain it?
I cannot, that's correct. I cannot draw anymore. It'll, it'll sit there. The, the city doesn't lose the money, but we cannot draw additional money. I mean, basically, we have to use what we have.
So we basically have to empty our bank account so we can put more money in, okay?
Basically.
So, given that, I'm sorry, what is the total budget? What is the total number? Well, I guess for the public facilities is 1. million dollars, and you're proposing to basically spend half of it right now in the community center or in the very near future. Is that correct?
Right.
And what, and what is near future, more or less months or this year, this current year?
We can do it within this current fiscal year. This is for the upcoming fiscal year, starting July 1.
And by spending half of this money, are we still at risk of not being able to draw any money, this, further monies this year? Meaning, are we going to lose an opportunity to not draw more monies if we were to spend it all?
We have enough money now that we can create, or we can continue with a current operating budget that I have proposed. We don't have to draw the money for a capital project. It'll just kind of accumulate. But at some point, council may want to decide on using those funds, because we'll always have more money than what we may be spending in any given year. So I guess I'm, I'm proposing a, a pretty good budget for this current fiscal year. There's a lot of proposals on the table. We're going to be increasing our economic development program, for example. We're going to be increasing our code enforcement efforts this year. So we're going to be spending the money in kind of an operating budget. And council can certainly do that. We can continue on that track for another two or three years. But at the same time, we might also have an opportunity to do a capital project, but it is totally council's choice.
Okay. I, I guess I would like to see at, at one point in time in this year, sort of a discussion of, of what are the new projects and really go down this list in more detail, so the council can actually make some decisions as to how to allocate this money. However, in the meantime, you have a report to fill. I understand that you need to go to the state and, and say something. So, so I guess, given that, given all of this, I don't have any further questions at this time.
Yeah, we don't, I, I think the other point I just want to make is that, you know, I'm certainly hearing from council that recommendation number two is, is not something I'm hearing council want to take action on, which is directing the 1.5 million at this time. And we can certainly remove that recommendation from, from the action.
What, what would, I mean, there's no harm done if we just don't do that at this point in time?
No, there's no, there's no harm done.
But that money is still there someplace, right?
That's correct. And so, so essentially, what I'll be doing is, in your, in your packet, for example, and it's attachment number two, there's a spreadsheet. And that spreadsheet shows how I would have proposed to use new CDBG money. We're estimated at receiving about a half million dollars, and that's, in that first column, it's fiscal year 10 estimated. And of course, I'm showing we would use so much for administration, so much for code enforcement, so on and so forth. Essentially, what I would be doing is I would be moving all those expenses from that column into the third column, which is program income, new and reprogrammed. So I would just be deferring the use of about a half million dollars and just move it all into program income, which is what we currently have. And that half million that we would have spent this coming fiscal year will simply just sit in reserve.
Yeah, let's have, Tony.
Just a minute. I, I would just hate to put the senior, the community center in any kind of funding jeopardy or, or, so there.
No, the senior center would not be in any jeopardy for funding. I'm just kind of switching.
Moving stuff around.
Expenses, expenses from one, kind of from one fund to another.
Sort of like you do at home when you, thank you.
I don't have that many zeros on anything I've got at home. At least on that side of the decimal point. Let's, let's open it up at this time for, for public comment. Is there any, is anyone from the public that would like to comment on the item before us?
Do you understand?
I don't think anybody understands what we're doing. Saying no, oh. But she'll speak anyway.
Seems like we have a lot of money that we can spend. Anybody been down to those restrooms where you can go swimming in the Ryan Park restrooms when they flush the toilets? It's about time to spend some in there. Why not that?
Thank you, Mr. Seacrest. No one else will close public comment and bring it back to the, to the council? Ms. Martner?
Well, taking on the lead from the public comment, I really would like to see something done with these monies. And, and I have to say, you know, the Ryan Park is, is a park that is used by the community at large. It's also used by, you know, events that come there, the dog show and et cetera. There are really actual events that benefit this town. Why don't just, we fix up those, those restrooms? We have the money. I, you know, having the money sit there, I just really don't see the value of it at this point in time. It will not jeopardize another top priority project, which is the community center. We're, we're going to have enough monies for the community center. So I really would like to channel some of these monies to make something happen, and I think the Ryan Park restrooms, which is not an expansion, it is, as I understand, is to make it ADA compliant and to fix them up a little bit. And this is our park. This is our city. This is where, you know, youth and old go and visitors go and visit this park. So I would like to really channel some monies there.
Diana, given that, and I think we all agree with that, would you recommend we just delete paragraph two here? And that puts that 1.5 million into your, your program funding so that you can come back to us at the time staff can come back to us with the, with the restroom funding and, and maybe we have a better idea how we want to allocate our money at that time?
Yeah, I, I think that's a, a good direction, Mayor, because at this time, I couldn't tell you what the construction estimate would cost for that project. That's, that also is a project that needs to go out to bid and, and get some, some cost estimates. So we can certainly come back and give you a better figure on that, and then you can still decide whether to go forward or not.
So then I would move that the city council adopt recommendations number one and three on the face page of the staff report.
Could we, sorry, Mayor.
That's all right.
Could we add an element to it that the staff would come back with a project description as far as the, or do we do that, or do I make an agenda motion after this?
I have to assume that Ms. Barzalona has heard our comments here and that that one will be looked into and we'll, we'll get a status report soon, telling what the status is and how quickly it'll come back. For now, we're looking at the budgets for the CDBG program, not for the engineering or, or, or actions on the, on the restrooms themselves. And I, I assume we'll get that back as soon as you can find out what, what the status is and let us know, but it wouldn't affect the item, the, the motion before us.
Yes.
I'll second your motion, so we can get going.
Okay, we have a motion for items, for recommendations one and three. Let's, let's vote on that motion. That passes unanimously. Site for the new transit? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Honorable mayor, members of the council, I have a recommendation before you tonight for the city council and the redevelopment agency board to approve for the purchase or preparing environmental studies, the site on the northeast corner of Cypress Avenue and Ice Street as a project location for the new transit center. Staff has been working with Docking Engineering for approximately a year, studying various sites throughout the city and, which would be the most useful and most efficient and effective for our transit operations. Matt Boyer with Docking Engineering is here tonight to do a presentation for you and answer any further questions.
Mayor, members of the council, I am Matt Boyer, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. Your staff has worked very hard with us over the last year plus, in fact, over seven of the city departments have been involved in this effort. And I have to say that I'm, I'm very pleased with the, the work that they've done and the deliberation and the amount of time and energy that's gone into it. I think it's one of the, the better transit facilities I've ever worked on. Just to summarize the work that we've done over the last couple of years, we started with doing forecasts for your future ridership so that we could identify a site that was going to fulfill the city's needs in the long term. And as you might know, your, your five local bus service routes currently transfer at Mission Plaza at a facility that was constructed as part of the original development. And the issue with that site is that it's, the city has outgrown it over the years. You have not only a site that's, that's not large enough to accommodate your local bus services, but you have sort of some, some difficult conflicts between the bus traffic and the passenger vehicles and pedestrians there in the shopping center. So it's been a high priority for the city to identify a new location for some time now. We went through and we actually analyzed sites throughout the city, and I'll show you a quick exhibit of that. We developed some criteria using members of the public's input as well as staff's input about how we could evaluate those sites and, and identify which were the, the highest ranking sites, and then went through a further evaluation of those. We did hold, held, held two community meetings during our work and then also had a meeting with the Chamber of Commerce and a, and a group of business, business leaders from the downtown area. Couple of the key considerations that we brought to the table were making sure again that the size and the expandability of the facility would meet the city's long-term needs. We needed to make sure it would be compatible with the adjacent land uses. We wanted to make sure that the site was universally accessible to people of all levels of mobility, bicyclists, pedestrians, as well as those accessing in their cars. We wanted to be essential to existing bus routes as possible. We wanted to be consistent with many of the different adopted city plans, not only minimizing impacts to private property, but one of the city's concerns from day one was to try to avoid taking properties off of the tax rolls and reducing income that would otherwise be coming to the city. And obviously identifying a project that was highly cost-effective and would have a minimal amount of environmental impact. The purpose of this exhibit is just to give you an idea that we literally looked at every parcel within the city limits. There were 18 that we formally evaluated everywhere from the far northern reaches of the city, just north of the river, to here in the downtown area, and both to the far reaches to the east and to the west. And to give you an idea of the level of evaluation, the last five sites, we actually brought forward and evaluated against all those criteria, and we did sort of a Consumer Reports analysis of how each of those sites ranked against each of the criteria. And really pleased to say, this is the first time in my career that one site above all others was really far superior, and that was the site that Mr. Fernbaum mentioned at the, the northeast corner of the Cypress and Ice Street intersection. That is currently a city redevelopment agency-owned parking facility. It's part of the network of parking facilities in downtown Lompoc. Currently, about 40 to 60% of that lot is used on any given portion of any weekday. There's a number of other city parking facilities, as you know, between Cypress Street and Ocean Avenue, particularly on the northern side of the Chamber of Commerce building. There, there's virtually no use in that parking facility. So within a one-block area, there's substantially more parking that would be necessary for short-term and projected long-term needs in the downtown. The benefit to this site from a transit standpoint is you have both your commuters going via bus to Santa Barbara that are already there downtown, as well as many of your carpoolers. The purpose of, of this location, one of the benefits of this location, would it be centralizing the rest of the transit activity in the downtown area? And what we've shown here is just a conceptual layout for what the facility might look like. We certainly would be spending an awful lot of time with the, the community and with your city staff to identify the more details of the layout, what a shelter structure might look like, what some of the amenities might look like, and how we would blend that further with the downtown. Again, we, we met several times with the community. We met with a, a group of the downtown business leaders. We're very excited about the opportunities that this provides, both for transit as well as for some of the economic development opportunities downtown. And given that budget and schedule are, are always at the forefront of everybody's mind, we put a very conservative budget together on the expenditure side. On the revenue side, the project would be funded by Proposition 1B Transit Funds. This was the state voter-approved transportation bond measure from a couple of years ago. We also had some conversations with the city staff today that, that we could have this project potentially designed and ready to compete successfully for any of the second round of federal transportation stimulus dollars that might come forward, and we're helping some other communities in California do that. From a schedule standpoint, if you were to give us your concurrence tonight with this preliminary site identification, we believe the environmental documents could be complete this summer. We could be under construction this fall and have construction complete about one year from today. So in the interest of time, I, I would wrap my comments up, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that, that the council might have.
Questions? Ms. Martner?
Thank you for your presentation. I, I, I am a little concerned about parking. Not too long ago, we had, and I, perhaps Ms. Pelsford might remind me of this, at one point in time, there was a move to change some of the parking along the streets in there, and we had all the neighbors here at the chambers complaining. There was a particular complaint regarding the commuters that take the Clean Air Express and they park all along there. You're taking away a fair amount of that parking. So are we going to have all the commuters here complaining that, where is our parking? It's a block away, it's 5:00 in the morning, and I have to walk a block, an extra block?
Right.
So, so have you gotten public input? Has this undergone any public hearings yet?
We've had the two community meetings, which were over the, the course of the last couple of years. And then once we identified that the downtown site was one of the highest ranking sites, we met, we sent communications directly to all the, the property owners in the vicinity, those that were interested. I actually met with them one-on-one, and then we also followed up with a group of business leaders that was convened by the Chamber of Commerce.
So the neighbors are aware of this proposal?
I would say, to the extent that people pay attention to that kind of stuff, I think every effort was made by the city staff to, to bring that forward for the neighbors.
My next question, there is public restrooms in this transit facility?
That would be to be determined. It could be designed either way, and I would say the facilities we do, about half of the communities prefer to include restrooms and about half prefer not to include them.
And the reason why I'm bringing this up, that earlier on tonight, we heard our Pocket Park project where there would be public restrooms. So, you know, in the, in the interest of, of not having excessive number of public restrooms, perhaps there has to be some communication between.
Absolutely.
This project and that project, so we don't overdo it with public. ...this project and that project, so we don't overdo it with public restrooms within two blocks.
No, I think that's right. I think in terms of both the restrooms, the way that the site amenities, the palette of materials that we would use, we would want to make sure that there's some continuity between both projects, as well as the existing downtown, which has some architectural features already with it.
So it looks like it was planned?
We would want it to look like it was planned, and actually, the two projects in combination provide a wonderful...
I think they could complement each other.
Absolutely.
And, you know, they're public facilities, so perhaps, you know, the Pocket Park has less public restrooms than this one, whatever. I mean, to be discussed, but I just want to make sure that you're aware of that.
Absolutely. Now that both projects have arrived at this moment in time and both look like they're moving forward, now's the opportunity for both sides to sit down and make sure that the two projects do complement each other.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Public comment? Do we have any comment? Mr. Lynn.
John Lynn, City of Lompoc. I was at the presentation at the chamber when they came by and showed it, and I think everyone was in favor of the location. I don't think there's any question about that. I believe there were a lot of concerns in the room, and I certainly feel that way, that the space design or their preliminary design is a very big space waster, and that, to Ms. Bartner's point, we don't want to chew up as much parking as that design chews up. I don't know how many of you have been to San Luis Obispo. I think it's on Oso Street, which is one of their bus places next to the library. And I was impressed that in probably a quarter of the space that was allocated to this, they could get a whole series of buses by parallel nose-in parking. And the other thing that all of us commented on was that the quadrangle, if you will, between the buses is quite large, and we have this thing in Lompoc called Wind, and it's going to be a wind tunnel out there, and on a rainy day, it's going to be really horrible to go from bus to bus. And, you know, personally, I'm not a bus rider, but I surely would feel for somebody who had to sprint all the way across that thing on a rainy day. So perhaps a different design that was a better space utilizer, and again, referring to the one I saw in San Luis, where they were able to get a larger number of buses in a more compact zone, and that allows the people getting off Bus A to get on Bus Z without going quite such a distance. My experience with that parking lot now, with all the commuter buses, is that it's nearly full, and having just started out to make a really large investment in downtown, I sure don't want it to run out of parking if we can generate the number of wine facilities that we think we can generate once we get the ball rolling, so...
Thank you, Mr. Lynn.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Any other comments? We can bring it back to council, but if the wishes of the council on this item? Mr. Lingle?
I move that we accept staff recommendations on the project.
Motion?
I'll second it.
Second? Anyone on the council want to speak to or against the motion? Let's cast our votes then. Unanimous approval? SCADA system upgrade.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff, and members of the public, we put a lot of time into developing the staff report, but I'm going to kind of hit the highlights based upon the hour tonight, and would like to talk to you about the fact that we're here to request that the city council dispense with public bidding and approve the award of contract for professional services to Merlin CSI to perform professional services to design and modernize the existing SCADA system at the Lompoc Water Treatment Plant at a cost not to exceed $537,500. SCADA systems are widely used in wastewater plants, water plants, electric plants. In fact, we have SCADA systems at all three of those facilities here in the city. The water system SCADA has been cobbled together with many systems, different units that have been patched together over the years, and is now functional, but definitely not a modern and not necessarily the best way to meet our needs with respect to having a safe and secure water system and being able to adequately measure and monitor the delivery of potable water. Capital improvement project for this SCADA upgrade was originally approved in the biennial 2007-2009 budget and budgeted a cost of $653,270. Shortly thereafter, staff started exploratory discussions with a couple firms, one of which we cited in the staff report, to talk about the estimate, see if it was adequate to build a SCADA system at the water plant. And we learned at that time that SCADA project would probably cost on the order of $1 million. So we had a little over 50 percent of that funding, so we put the project on hold. We were able to observe, we meaning water plant staff, the work going on at the wastewater plant. And at that time, the electrical contractor had a SCADA firm doing the work on the SCADA for wastewater. It wasn't working out too well, and the contractor couldn't make it work, so they brought in a second contractor. There were also problems developed at that particular time, and so they brought in a third contractor, which is the Merlin CSI firm, and they were able to get the SCADA working at the water treatment plant. So staff thought, well, you know, if they're that good, maybe we should look and see what they could do for water as well. So Merlin CSI was contacted and became a logical option to competitive bidding to provide Waters Division with a SCADA network. The Water Division met with Merlin with the objective of finding out, can we take advantage of what was done at the wastewater plant, and will there be savings that could result from this? That Merlin had already gone through a learning curve over there, and there could be some transfer of that knowledge to the water system. The Merlin people thought that they could design a system for us at a reduced cost, taking advantage of the work they'd done at wastewater. We estimated the savings at about $250,000. That's for the construction of the SCADA system, which includes extensive programming. That's really a key part of the cost. We had a second engineering firm we've worked with, and we asked them if they would be willing to take a look at the savings that we thought we could develop from utilizing Merlin. And that firm was Corolo Engineering, and they've done a couple small projects for us in the past. So we asked them if they could confirm that through the utilization of Merlin that had done work at the wastewater plant, that two things, that knowledge was transferable and that our estimated savings were reasonable. And they were able to tell us that that was the case for both of those issues that we asked them to look at. Another advantage that we didn't have them look at is the fact that the plants can be shared and integrated and talk to each other because they will have the same programming basis. We also have SCADA technicians at each plant, and so we think there'd be some benefit from them being able to back up each other because they would have some familiarity with the system, because there will be some overlap. They aren't going to be the same systems, but they will internally have basically the same, I guess you might say, heart and veins that the other plant has. There are times when it makes good sense to standardize products or services on a sole-source basis, and we believe that this is one of those conditions. The City of Lompoc's code, under the section titled "Standardization," provides for the following. When supplies, materials, equipment, or services have been uniformly adopted or otherwise standardized, or when an item is designated to match others in use by the city, the purchase is not subject to this particular chapter, which is competitive bidding. And we do have other examples of that, primarily in the meter reading function, where we've standardized on one or two meters that are compatible with our automatic meter reading system, and when we've gone out for additional meter reading equipment or also associated with our SCADA system to read meters, we have been able to purchase those on a sole-source basis because of the cost of not having duplicate systems. So this is a little bit like that. Our cost estimate for the design and engineering and programming work, as I mentioned, is The hardware cost is expected to be $127,000. So the total cost of the project is now expected to be $664,500. So we now have the project at a cost that's below our authorized funding and that we think could be done efficiently. So we are recommending that the work be accomplished by sole-sourcing the project to a firm that's familiar with our requirements as a result of having completed a similar task as part of the Lompoc Regional Wastewater Treatment Plant Upgrade Project. The city purchasing procedures allow for sole sourcing. The Water Division is now in a position to proceed with acquiring and installing an upgraded SCADA system with an estimated total cost that's in line with our original budgeted amount. The SCADA upgrade project will improve our system reliability and the accuracy of our water production measurements. Gene Marchheim, who did a lot of work on coming up with this recommendation and did most of the work, I've sort of supported him as far as looking at this, and I are both available here to answer any questions of the council.
Any questions or comments at this time? Paul?
Do you have a public comment first?
Do you want to go? If you've got questions now?
Yeah, I did. You said the final, in the recommendations, it said a cost not to exceed $537,500.
Or Merlin.
For Merlin?
Yes.
But then there was another cost?
Yes, because there's $127,000 of additional equipment that would be used, and so bringing the total cost, I think it was $635, something of that nature.
Okay. Thank you.
Public comment? Any questions? No one rise, close public comment, bring it back to the council. Mr. Lingle?
I just have a couple of questions and comments for Mr. Stasi. Mr. Stasi, it goes against almost every bone in my body not to go up for competitive bidding. I understand your project and proposal here, and it's because I have faith in your judgment that I'll probably, I will be voting for this, but just to let you know that it...
Thank you. I don't hear that very often.
No. But I just want to make it clear that it really goes against my grain to not go up for competitive bidding, so I'm putting a lot of trust in your knowledge, and I believe I can...
Thank you. I understand that. We put a lot of, I guess, scrutiny to, before we'd come forward with this recommendation, but I do think the fact that we'd have the compatibility and we could get, you know, a quick start, because we have a team that did the programming and design at wastewater, that it'll bring value to the city over the long haul.
Any other questions? I have one. With the new system, it'll assist us in identifying the impact of any vandalism or terrorism or sabotage that we might have in our water system. Is it, could we, are there still homeland security funds available for security systems on our water treatment, water delivery system?
I don't know specifically if there are or not. All I can tell you is that we have a group that always looks for opportunities for grants and stimulus funds, and I don't know, Gene, are you aware of anything in particular?
To that, there was about $10,000 just set aside for security needs in case something did come up. So it's a possibility that we could use some of those funds, but we always like to put some of that in there. But we had an extensive overview of the security assessment about four or five years ago, so we're still, we'll still probably be budgeting for any other things that would come up.
Okay. Doesn't sound like there's lots of money, though, and that $10,000 is money of our own that we put aside for security.
Correct. It was just in case things did come up that we wanted to do with security in mind.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any other questions. What if the wishes of the council on this item?
I move that we accept staff recommendations.
I second the motion.
Let's cast our vote.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't, all right, thank you. We'll take this item. See, with my vote earlier on prayer, I can't go home tonight anyway.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. If you recall, the city currently operates under a municipal stormwater permit, and back in September, we adopted our interim low-impact development guidelines. And our permit also requires that we have long-term water protection guidelines, and those involve something a little more than, you know, where we went with our interim guidelines. The Central Coast Regional Water Quality Control Board has obtained $600,000 for Phase One of a project that is called the Joint Effort. It involves an opportunity for all the communities within Region Three to go ahead and work together to develop a methodology for the long-term water protective measures. And so with that opportunity, we would note that all the other communities have indicated their interest in participation. In order to participate in the joint effort, the regional board is requiring that we amend our permit to include their best management practices that specifically focus on the joint effort. Because the regional board's Phase One effort is a little bit behind its original schedule, and they do not yet have a consultant onboard to perform the scope of work that you have in your packet, we are proposing that we, that the city indicate its desire to participate in the joint effort, but only submit the required municipal permit revisions once the regional board has retained a consultant or consultants to implement the project's scope of work. And with that, I would like to make the recommendation... That's what happens when it gets like the pages stick together. That the city council authorize the City of Lompoc's participation in the Central Coast Regional Water Quality Control Board's joint effort, and direct staff to prepare the joint effort agreement, Attachment One, for the mayor's signature; direct staff to amend the city's stormwater management program, to add the requirements and best management practices found in Attachment Three, to this stormwater management program; number four, direct staff to submit the joint effort agreement; and number five, direct staff to submit the revised stormwater management program to the Central Coast Regional Water Quality Control Board on receipt of the Regional Water Quality Control Board's notification that a contract has been awarded for the joint effort's scope of work. Thank you, and I'm available for questions. I'd also like to introduce Dominic Rock of the Regional Water Quality Control Board, who is going to be the project manager on this project. So he can also answer any questions. So he can also answer any questions, and he may have a few words he'd like to present to you in your short timeline.
No, Stacy?
Yeah.
I have a comment here. On your staff report under fiscal impact?
Yes.
It says it's unknown?
That is correct.
And if they don't get the $600,000, we're going to have to cough up money?
Okay. The way that I see the situation thus far, Dominic has said that Phase One, the joint effort has two phases. Phase One is the development of the methodology, and Phase Two is application of the methodology. At this point, the $600,000 is estimated to be able to cover Phase One, development of the methodology. The unknown portion, then, would be Phase Two, implementation of the methodology. The difficulty that we have and why we're here recommending the joint effort is that we are required under our existing permit to come up with a methodology and implementation already. And in this joint effort, the methodology is already covered from a funding standpoint, and so it most likely would be less expensive to go with the joint effort approach. The other thing is that the joint effort would have a consistent methodology within the whole Region Three, which is from Santa Cruz to Santa Barbara.
Is there any, I'm going to ask that gentleman, is there any figure that it might, what it might cost us for the implementation?
Because we do not know what the resulting methodology will be, we do not know what the implementation figure will be.
Right. That's kind of crazy. Thank you, Stacy.
Cecilia?
I have a question for Stacy. Sorry. One of them is just a curious question. I see that the jurisdictions that have agreed to participate in this, there is a whole bunch of cities, but then there is the University of California.
Correct.
Where is that?
They are also subject to the stormwater municipal permit, although I think they're, they may be non-traditional. They're a non-traditional, we're a traditional, but they are also included, and Santa Cruz is in there, too.
Right, there is UC Santa Barbara and then Santa Cruz. Now, the next one, something as far as going in this participation of the joint effort is, once this project gets implemented, there is going to be a cost to development, right? A large cost to any kind of development, I expect.
As in someone comes into the community and wishes to develop a shopping center?
Right. So to be consistent with our surrounding vicinities is very important, is very important to us, because otherwise we may be at a disadvantage, competitive disadvantage, that our implementation is different than the rest, and then you get into the whole issue, are they going to be cheaper, and we're more expensive, and vice versa. So there is a lot of value add to do it jointly, so we're not sort of single out, especially with something of this sort that is really going to cost money, right? So I think that's important to emphasize here. Anyway, thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. My name is Dominic Rock. I'm with the Central Coast Water Quality Control Board, and I did want to thank you very much for the opportunity to speak and try to address any, any questions you might have about this effort, which is really designed to assist the municipalities with compliance with our regulations. I won't belabor you with any presentation. I did want to just kind of hit on some of the points that Ms. Lawson brought up, which is that I think her staff report really succinctly states the advantages to participating, but I wanted to add that also that the water board requirements would automatically be, for the interim requirements, would automatically be suspended, so you'd have additional time to develop longer-term, more robust hydro modification measures. Again, we, we often are here to hear the problem that we're creating a one-size-fits-all approach, and this is, this is a strategy to do the opposite. It's to use a consistent approach, but when applied in each individual city would generate unique and landscape and location-specific criteria. So it's not a one-size-fits-all approach in the sense that everyone will end up with slightly different criteria that make sense for their area. So in a city like Lompoc, which has some good soil drainage and has some retention facilities in place and has various characteristics like that, those will be considered in the development of the final methodology. But again, I wanted to thank you for the opportunity. I'm happy to answer any questions, and I also wanted to mention that Lompoc City staff have actually participated in several workshops and attended presentations that we've given, that the regional board has hosted, that they have continued to ask very tough questions, and that we appreciate their participation and their effort to really follow what has been a very dynamic regulatory system, situation. So, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any, oh, public comment?
Mayor, city council, Will Skyler, I live in the city. What I stayed to talk to you about tonight on this was on Item C, a direct staff to amend the city's stormwater management program and add the requirements for best management practices. I want to caution you on a little trap, at least that's the way I take it. There is BAT, and there's RAT. BAT is best available technology. That is, we're going to have clean air in this room at a certain deal, and we don't care what it costs. You've got to do it, or you can't operate. The reasonable is, well, you could put in a humidifier for 200 bucks and do the job, and the building's definitely worth that. So when you vote on this, think of who you're going to affect and how much money this is going to cost somebody, because the best available technology means do it, I don't care what it costs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Skyler. Close public comment period, bring it back to the council. What are the wishes of the council on the item?
I agree with ex-councilmember Skyler. We've been battling this whole unfunded mandate for, I don't know how long, four years now, and we keep sending letters of protest and so on, but it is, like they said, you do it or, you know, the world's going to fall apart. I don't know. Anyway, I, I'm really against this whole regional water quarry, I call it the swamp idea, because it's going to affect our farmers, it's going to affect our developers, it's going to affect our business people in the long run, and it's not a good thing for the city or the business people or our agricultural people, and this is all over the state, and I am totally against this whole thing. And I know we've got to play the game, but I don't like it at all, not at all, because I think it's a really, we've been battling this ever since I've been on council, so, you know, just one of these things that says you do it or else, and I don't like to have the shotgun to my head like this. Anyway, that's how I feel about it.
Mr. Durham?
I have a question for Ms. Lawson. Is this something that is required by law that we fulfill?
It is a term of our permit that we develop long-term water protective measures. Whether we do it by the joint effort or whether we do it on our own is up to us, but-
But as you stated before-
-at the same time, the regional board must agree to the methodology or must, we must be able to show that it meets the maximum extent practicable, practicable result.
You know, I agree with Councilmember Roger as far as the, you know, I don't like it when there's a blank as far as the physical impact, but we're going to have to do it anyway, and it's going to be cheaper if we go inside with, yeah, yeah, it makes sense. Thank you.
Ms. Martin?
I agree with Councilmember Durham. This is one of the things that we have to do, and going into the joint effort, I think it can only benefit us and not create a disadvantage.
Stacy, if we participate in Phase One with the other jurisdictions and develop the methodology, and that methodology will be such that can be tailored to the unique characteristics of each community, before implementation, will it come back to council? And at that time, we'll have an estimate of the cost, and we'll have an estimate of the impact? Or is it automatic if we're participating in this that we've got to move ahead?
Well, I would defer to Joe's opinion. I would believe that because you would be adopting long-term protective measures, it would have to be your action to adopt them. It would be the same kind of standards that we adopted when we did the interim guidelines. Size of property, you know, percentage of-
If there's no funding for Phase Two now, it would appear to me that it has to come back to council for us to approve the funding from whatever source to implement those. So we, I-
That's true, but I, it's one of those, it will come back to you for review. You won't have a lot of options, because there won't be a whole lot of options to choose from, because you'll have to do something.
Well, is our action, well, our action tonight is not committing us to do this because we're already required to do it. Is that fair?
You're required to ultimately do what you'll end up doing jointly. You could choose to do it separately, but it makes more sense to do it jointly.
Mr. Mayor, I want to make a motion that we accept staff recommendation on this, Item 12.
I second.
Any other discussion, comments? Let's vote. Under protest. Thank you. Thank you, Stacy. Thank you.
No protest.
All right. Written communications? None. Oral communications, two minutes maximum. Council requests? Announcement?
Yes.